Every shooting, like the one in Colorado, we, in the media and in society, we ask the same two questions: Why and could this have been prevented? Often, we seek those answers from the parents of the killer, and quite often, those answers, well frankly, they're not forthcoming. The parents often go into hiding. Some people get angry at the parents. Nancy Lanza was one of her son's victims, but she was also the one who connected him with guns and who watched his emotional disintegration into a pit of violence and anger. And what of Adam Lanza's dad? We've heard nothing from him. What about the Klebolds or the Harrises, the parents of the Columbine shooters? What about the Piercings? In the book Far From the Tree: Parents, Children, and the Search for Identity, author Andrew Solomon interviewed the parents of Dylan Klebold from Columbine. He interviewed them multiple times over seven years, and Mr. Solomon joins me now from New York. Thanks for being here. You've studied hundreds of families who encounter a wide range of issues with their children. How much should we hold the parents of these teen killers accountable?
I think it's very comforting to hold the parents of the killers accountable. It makes us feel like the situation can be controlled, but I think it's often misguided. Some of these kids come from very disturbed homes, but many of them have extremely loving parents who are trying to pay close attention to them. Certainly with the Klebolds, they were really quite wonderful parents, and they had no idea what was going on inside their son's head.
Well, you spent a lot of time with the parents of Dylan Klebold, and the mother, Sue, told you that, quote, "What I've learned from being an outcast since the tragedy has given me insight into what it must have felt like for my son to be marginalized. He created a version of his reality for us, to be pariahs, unpopular, with no means to defend ourselves against those who hate us." So, talk to us about what they're going through and what you learned about their relationship with Dylan before the shooting. I think a lot of us have a tough time imagining that there were no warning signs at all.
I think they had a very loving relationship with Dylan, and that he appeared to be an adolescent who was a little angsty, and that they had moments of thinking that he was struggling a little bit, but nothing major, nothing serious, and certainly nothing that was threatening to other people. If they were concerned about anything, they were concerned that he was himself sad and might be a little bit depressed. And after it took place, they were in a state of complete shock. It was inconceivable to them that the child they knew would be capable of such a thing.
So, let's turn to the parents of Adam Lanza. Last week, I spoke to Nicole Hawkeley, who lost her son Dylan at Newtown last year. I asked her what she made of the evidence that Nancy Lanza, the mother, had kept guns in the house and had even provided her son with weapons. Here's her response.
I believe that the Sandy Hook shooting could have been avoided if proper intervention had been made, if he and his family had received help, had sought help, and had received help at an earlier stage.
Obviously, each one of these tragic stories is separate and distinct. What do you make of Nancy Lanza and her involvement with her son, providing him with guns, allowing him to fester in this cocoon of hatred in his room? Does she bear any responsibility for what happened at Sandy Hook?
Well, look, what happened at Sandy Hook was an unspeakable tragedy, as these events are tragedies. I think it's clear that if she had thought that he was dangerous, she would not have left the gun sitting out, since he used one of them to kill her, and she presumably didn't want that to happen. I think she was bewildered by her own child. You know, we all like to think that we know our children, that we know their inner lives, but people keep secrets from their parents. People keep all kinds of secrets. The Lanzas actually did seek help. They went to a number of psychiatrists with Adam, mostly because he had Asperger's syndrome, and they were trying to figure out how to help him to function. None of the professionals who saw him ever picked up on the possibility that he could pose an acute danger to anyone else or to himself.
Andrew Solomon with insights into what it's like being a parent of one of these teen killers. Thank you so much for your time.
Catherine Massey Book Club, context of white supremacy. So, that is audio segment number one, Sue Klebold. I'm so glad, this is Alice Sebold, I don't know, Jeffrey Toobin, this is one I'm very thankful that I'm a little bit more informed about things before reading this book. Number to dial, 720-716-7300. Press * 61 if you would like to participate. Press * 61 if you would like to participate. If you prefer to email your commentary, the email, untiljustice@gmail.com. Can read your anonymous thoughts as we proceed. I guess, for one, do we think, old Sue Klebold, do we think there are any deliberate lies in the book? That's something to kind of keep in mind for the duration, what we've heard thus far. We're going to hear like a teaspoon of the book, like the introduction preface in chapter ones. We've heard very little, but do we think deliberate lies? That's one. And then specifically, I asked a question, or a poll, rather. It's on my Twitter, love that social media, @UntilJustice. So, why do we think, what's the primary motivation? People can do things for a confluence of reasons, right? Everybody. But what do we think is the primary motivator for why old Sue Klebold, why did she write this here book? And I gave four possibilities. There could be others, but these were four that I thought of at the time. If you think of a different one, you can share that one as well. The four that I thought of, cash, in no particular order. Cash, deflect blame, attention. When I say, when I mean, attention, meaning, hey, with, kind of the same thing like with her offspring, I can get on Oprah, Diane Sawyer, come talk to me, do the book show, circuit. She has a number on there for speaking engagements and such, come out and talk about mental illness and suicide, all that good stuff, so, attention. And then guilt. And I said, those are just the four that I thought of. I'm sure there could be other reasons, but what do we think is the primary reason why did Sue Klebold pen this book? We'll kind of ponder on that one as we proceed. Let's see, hit the phone line first, see if folks have commentary, and then I'll share some of the emails, kind of sprinkle those in as we proceed. Let's see, folks who dialed in, if you have commentary to share, line should be open. Victim in New Jersey.
Yeah, hey Gus. That introduction was, it was hard to, it was hard to listen to, and it sounded like, you know, it's, you know, like, no name call. I mean, even with respect to racism, but I just couldn't help just to think. I said, you know what, honestly, make an exception today. First thing that just came on my mind was, this woman is such a good woman. And that'll be my last name call of this woman. The introduction, the judge mentioned deception as they talked about these two killers. From the book we just read, there was no deception. These two killers were who they were. The introduction, they talked, the author, or the guy that, whoever wrote the introduction talked about how Klebold, she automatically went into Harris, dragging her son down, a metaphor. Her son was dragged down by Harris, went into, her son was depressed, he wanted, so Harris wanted to kill, the Klebold killer wanted to die. Okay. They kind of, not even kind of, but they're interjecting, missing health issues, but in the introduction, Dylan had no mental diagnosis. Oh, they mentioned the clout-chasing white man in the beginning of the introduction. Void of concept, but they mentioned the clout-chasing white man. And I think that was purposely put there to, to bring, I guess, to highlight the humanity of hurt someone, to kill them. Isaiah Shaw's family was mistreated, but this woman is writing books, memoirs, and getting interviews. A black mom couldn't have wrote this book. This book would be banned in Ron DeSantis' Florida. Again, alluding to brain issues, you know, trying to, you know, because the subconscious mind, you know, it's real, and I'm not, you know, I'm far from Ben Carson, you know, or any other medical experts, you know, whether dealing with the heart or the brain. But from what I read and what I've heard about subconscious mind, it picks up on those messages. You know, so now you're disarmed, and you start to sympathize with Mama Klebold, and in turn, you start to, oh, no, oh, yeah, you know, yeah, Dylan, you know, he may have been a victim too, but he's not a victim. Nate, I'm not sure of this best friend Nate, I don't remember what he mentioned in the last book, but if my brain computer was working well, Nate called already thinking that Dylan was one of the suspects, one of the shooters. And she, you know what I mean, so the father kind of, the father acknowledged that, and the mother was aware of that as they were searching for the coat, and she still kind of, some cognitive dissonance there, she's still kind of like thinking her son was the victim while looking for the coat, when, if memory serves me correct, the first initial call was implicating him as one of the shooters. Again, I'm still kind of, uh, taken aback by the clout-chasing white man being entered, being talked about at the beginning of this book, but this is going to be a classic examination, not only of white people, but of white women. So, I'm all ears.
I'm wounded, yes, yes, we have the white man who built the crosses that I do remember seeing, but I did not know that this was just a big stunt, clout chasing. I had no idea until we read Dave Cullen's book, and then to have that pop up right at, that almost is kind of like, what do they call them, an omen? Ooh, we need to have that involved. I mean, at this late date, so this is 2016, so at this point, you spoke to all these experts, you should know, like, ew, these crosses, that's, maybe we'll pick something else, maybe, maybe we don't take the clout-chasing white man. That's why I said, I'm so glad we're reading this book now. We are more informed, because yes, we have heard Nick Dykman before. Yes, we heard all that. Dave Cullen, Nate calls, they go, oh, they weren't at bowling, oh, Mike Moore, they weren't at bowling, oh, they said they had trench coats. I know somebody who got trench coats, oh, you seen old Dill? Yes, we heard all that. Uh, let's see, the, oh, and the, if a black person, I've been bringing that point up repeatedly, if Jamal and Leroy had done all of this, you could wait 16 years, 60 years, 6,000 years. There is no way in the Christ, a black mother or father is, we're going to hook you up with a book deal, get a bestselling expert to come write you an amazing introduction, get you so much sympathy, get you, hook you up so that you can be on the road to having a New York Times bestseller, where we sympathize with you as the Negro parent of some Negro child who killed 13 people, many of them children? Anyway, she wants to do all this talking about brain science and such? Someone has been talking all year long about the Brain Science Convention in Washington, DC. Yes, registration early, registration just opened. If folks think that would be constructive for Gus T. to go attend, snoop around, see if we can maybe do some programs while we are there, let me know. Invest, we'll see if we can hang out for November, but lots of, I feel like since I've been talking about all of that in November of last year, it's come up on a pretty regular basis in some surprising ways, once again. All right, let's see. Let's see, we'll get the other folks who called in. Uh, let's see. Email untiljustice@gmail.com. Lauren with us as well. Commentary to share.
Yes, sir. May I be heard?
Yes, ma'am.
My notes aren't really organized today, so you're going to have to forgive me for that. I noticed, it's, well, it seems like the preface was omitted from the audiobook, so that preface was pretty interesting to me. It was about four and a half pages. She talked about Dylan being released from the diversion program early, that was also in Columbine, and it made me wonder what the racial classification of the 5% of people who really are. Question, what is the primary motivation for Sue Klebold writing this book right now? The answer is, I don't know, but I do think cash to deflect blame and attention are reasonable answers to that question. Guilt, I don't know, I'm not convinced she feels guilty, so I don't know if that's what she meant. It also talks about Sue Klebold's Job-like descent into an incomprehensible hell. Dylan compared himself to Job in his writings. Also, talked about, so it must have been that part at the beginning by, oh, man, I think his name was Andrew, Andrew Solomon. It said that the book was noble, kind of misplaced it, but somewhere it said the book was noble, I didn't really, I don't know what that means. I'm going to have to look that word up to see if the definition of noble syncs up to what we read in the book. Let me see, I'm not organized over here. I just feel like Sue Klebold, nah, I don't want to say I feel like, I think Sue Klebold is trying to get people to feel sorry for her with this book, and I don't know if she's trying to make it seem like she's a victim too. I'm going to have to think about that, but that's a distinct possibility. And there was another part where it said, "Good people do bad things." Well, it was, Andrew Solomon must have said it, says, "She argues that good people do bad things, that all of us are morally confused, and that doing something terrible does not erase other acts and motives." Well, if a good person does bad things, I guess I need to understand, well, I need a definition for what good is. People use these terms all the time, good and bad, people won't really tell me what they mean. It seems people use that term good to mean desirable, but people don't agree on these things. One person will think one thing is desirable, and it's not desirable to another person. And if a good person does a bad thing, what's the difference between a bad person and a good person? I just, it doesn't make sense to me. There was another part, let me see, "The extreme self-importance tinge with sadism, the randomness of the attack, and the scale of the advanced planning have made Eric Harris and Dylan Klebold heroes to a large community of causeless young rebels." I think that was a reference to the movie Rebel Without a Cause. Lots of people tried to emulate James Dean or just admired that movie character, so, I don't know, I kind of think that's incorrect. Another part where it says, "Sue Klebold emphasizes the suicidal element of her son's death. Carl Meninger, who has written extensively on suicide, said that it requires the coincidence of the wish to kill, the wish to be killed, and the wish to die." I have to think about that, too. I'm not certain it's true, I just need to give it some further thought, but it stood out to me. Oh, I found the nobility part. "The existence of disorder thinking does not mitigate the malevolence of Dylan's acts. Part of the nobility of this book is that it doesn't try to render what he did into sense." So, the nobility of this book, that's interesting, I don't know if that's accurate. Actually says, "Sue Klebold has never complained of being a victim, but her narrative echoes that of Job, who says, 'Shall we receive good from God, and shall we not receive evil?'" Does seem like she's trying to get people to feel pity for her, and it seems like that the whole book. I know we're at the beginning, but I kind of read ahead, and wow, it's persistent and it continues. Oh, okay, there's another part, it says, "The lawyer Tom had contacted, Gary, I think Lozo, I'm not sure if that's how it was said, had reached out to the sheriff's office. He was calling back to tell Tom the unthinkable was now confirmed. Although reports were wildly contradictory, there was no doubt something terrible involving gunmen was happening at Columbine High School. The district attorney's office had confirmed to Carrie Lozo that they suspected Dylan was one of the gunmen, but the police were on their way to our home." Now, with all of this stuff going on, this lady still got advance notice, well, not just her, her and her husband were on their way. It just made me wonder how many times are the police on the way to non-white people's houses, and we get some sort of advance warning? I just don't think that happens that much, but I think it's commonplace with people who classify themselves as white. I noticed the part about the gun catalog that she threw away, I think I ought to have looked at the name on that, but I do get a lot of catalogs at the house that I throw away, but there are catalogs that I've seen before. If a gun catalog came to my house, I think I would pay just a little bit more attention to it. And that's all I have for now. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Much obliged, Lauren. In terms of patterns, I will say, that is a mega, mega, mega trend. I keep bringing up that these are bombings, in terms of Columbine and Eric Rudolph with the Olympics and Timothy McVeigh, that these are bombings? Woo, that is, with Waco, that's in there too, April 19th, that date, and bomb, they were making, that's the whole reason that started, guns. Even that, Eric Harris in his journal was complaining about the Brady Bill, right? We remember that? He, "We need guns, Brady Bill, no count keeping me from getting my guns," and all that, so he talked about that explicitly. That's Waco. They were illegal guns, getting automatic firearms and what have you, and making bombs. I didn't even know that, making bombs, and they even threw explosive devices at the ATF agents, federal agents, when they came to serve their warrant for these illegal firearms, but they got tipped off. That was how, they lost the advantage, the agents were going to go, and they got tipped off. That's in the book we read on Timothy McVeigh, Andrew Gumbel, it's in there. They were going to serve a raid, they were going to arrest German white man, he's not even a citizen, Andreas Strassmeyer, I think that's his name, they were going to arrest him, he got tipped off. They keep saying that over and it's like, how did they get all these? Did they have homies who work, like, with enforcement officers? Like, did they have friends? Like, what? How did they keep getting all of these advance warnings so that they could, even Eric Rudolph? They were going to apprehend him, because he was on the lam, as they say, for years before they caught him. He apparently got tipped off. They said they went there and literally, it looked like he was just there, and somebody got a call, "Eric, get out of here, man." And he absconded for years. I don't think Leroy and Jamal, there we go, another one, I don't think Leroy and Jamal, they're, I don't think they get the heads up, might be, no, I don't, I don't, yeah. Okie dokie, let's see. Email, number one. Preface, Andrew Solomon, that's the fellow you all were talking about who wrote the preface, Andrew Solomon. I don't know, nobody said anything about it, so I'm saying it again, just for emphasis, now that we've heard all this. Dave Cullen, white man classified as gay. Andrew Solomon, white man classified as gay. All right, so, preface, number one, Klebolds, I liked them very much. I came away thinking the psychopathy of Columbine behind the Columbine massacre could emerge in anyone's household. The ultimate message of this book is terrifying. From the very start of the text, they are arguing that the Klebolds bear no responsibility, and parents in general, even that, I think when we spoke with Jeff Cass on Monday, yeah, right, he said, the attorney, Michael Eager, if I'm saying it correctly, that, he said, "Hey, any other time, I'm representing a Negro client, and it is these deadbeat, no count lazy Negro dads, and no count welfare moms, and they need to take care of their children, and that's what I hear. Now you got some white children who have run wild, and it's, whoa, 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 now we can't be blaming the parents now." He said, "Whoa, that's not what you said, that's not what you said, you're supposed to be consistent." Number two, Eric Harris, homicidal psychopath, Dylan Klebold, suicidal depressive. Eric was a failed Hitler, Dylan was a failed Holden Caulfield. Interesting use of metaphor. Two listeners point out metaphors, what is going on? They were both psychopaths, albeit brief, they didn't live too long. Harris did commit a notorious act of terror. Both committed suicide, and both continued to be revered by many worldwide. Holden Caulfield is the iconic teenage anti-hero of the book Catcher in the Rye. Anti-hero being a protagonist who has no heroic qualities. Klebold seems to have all the characteristics of the anti-hero, albeit a violent one. He was described as intelligent, handsome, charming, wholesome even. In fact, there are entire reports, dissertations, that that is the subject, the rise of the white, violent, anti- The rise of the white, violent anti-hero, and they put Columbine, the movie Falling Down that I mentioned, Breaking Bad, they just run right down the line in the same type, and real life. Timothy McVeigh, and they name all the people that I named, Timothy McVeigh, Eric Rudolph, and the same. Intelligent, rugged, handsome, manly, Ted Kaczynski, all, and they put them all together, they're people, literally. And it should be tons of reports, like, real, hey, what does it mean to be white? And we've had listeners say, hey, uh, so if the true crime community is all white women, so are they responsible for producing the white men who behave like this? Mother Superior? We'll keep reading. Number three, her book is a tribute to Dylan without being an excuse. I guess we will see if they succeed in this. Preface, Sue, "I'll never know whether I could have prevented my son's ter-" Oh, we didn't hear this part, I think, uh, Lauren just pointed that out, so. Uh, "I'll never know whatever I could have prevented my son's terrible role, but I have come to see things I wish I had done differently, small things, tapestry of normal family life. Anyone peeked inside our lives before Columbine thoroughly ordinary, no different from countless homes across the country." I've read that in The Art of Rhetoric and Persuasion, that it is important to repeat things three times. Klee Bold is skillfully absolving herself of responsibility. "We were just ordinary people, John Legend, there may have been signs, but they were small." They did keep some, little, small, trifling, minuscule, and not obvious. The rest of her, of the text, I suspect, will be the third time her absolution is reinforced. Two, days after Columbine, I filled a notebook, I journalized, found the journal keeping interesting, something to consider when going through a traumatic event, for sure. I said that about, uh, COVID nineteen, you should, you know, keep journals, all the wackiness. Chapter one, Nate had said the shooters wore black trench coats like the one we bought Dylan, coat was gone. Tom was frantic, sounded close to hysterical. Is this a subtle tell that Tom has been suspicious of his son's behavior well before the massacre? Question. Now, I do think Nate, at least from Colin's book, I think Nate suggested Dylan might be involved. So, that would've already kinda been pushing him to think, oh, no, is Dylan in this? Even if he, you know, for whatever reason, but I think Nate did kinda say, "He might be, he, reb and barco, he." Number two, "I was unsettled by the tight quality I'd heard in Dylan's voice when he'd said goodbye, and it bugged me that he hadn't stopped to share his plans for the day. This seems to contrive, this seems contrived to me." She is saying she was not oblivious to her son's behavior, but overt signs were not there? Hmm, good point, good point. And, I mean, hey, what about that paper where the school? How many of you are that our parents have had a teacher contact you and say that this is the most extreme example of whatever a student has, has ever submitted to me in my time teaching? How many of you all have experienced that? Right. Number three. "Now I understand that Tom's fears also included something which Dylan could need a lawyer." The district attorney confirmed suspected Dylan was one of the gunmen. Again, was Tom suspicious prior to the incident? The parents in the previous text were mostly worried whether their child was hurt or killed. Hmm, hmm, well, now, with the lawyer, then that would be two people who have kind of suggested, "Eee, you might be culpable, get that insurance policy out." Number four, avidly anti-gun, "I was, even though we moved to a rural area where hunting and hanging out at shooting range were popular, pastimes, guns were an accepted part of the culture where I lived. During a recent House broadcast, it was mentioned that most gun owners do not use it for hunting, at least not for animals." Dr. Angeline Spalding Flowers, White Males and White Gun Culture. She made that a point of emphasis, that, yeah, two thousand twenty-five, we do not hunt in the US. And I don't know about other parts of the world, but in the US, no, ain't no hunting going on. Chipotle, McDonald's, Whole Foods, and then we go out to shoot people generally, or at least targets that look like Negroes, Obama. Audio segment number two, if you did not get to share the rest of your thoughts and such, write them down. We will have time to share once we get back. Uh, so be thinking, is she lying to us? I didn't even get to my notes. Is she lying to us? Why did she write this here book? What was her primary motivating factor? Be thinking as we proceed, noble, that's an important one, too. Is this a noble project? Catherine Massey Book Club, context of white supremacy, audio segment two. Just incredible, man, just incredible. Catherine Massey Book Club, context of white supremacy. The number seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. How could you not know this? They planned to bomb the school for a year, maybe longer. How did you not know this? I don't even wanna hear no nonsense about old Eric Harris. Eric Harris spent the night at their house in the days leading up to this attack. Came in the house with a massive duffel bag. Tom Klee Bold said, oh, you know, the children, they play hopscotch and stuff, you know, thought he had his laundry and kickball, you know? You didn't ask what was in the duffel bag? No. The same Eric Harris that got arrested with your child breaking into the van? Yep, that, that Eric, same Eric Harris that got suspended from school for hacking into the computers? Going into the students' lockers with your child? That Eric Harris? Yep, that Eric, and you didn't ask what was in the duffel bag? Nope. Hmm, hmm. Catherine Massey Book Club, so the poll, I'll give you the results, y'all make sure you vote, it'll be up for a week. The poll, what do you think was Sue Klee Bold's main motivator for writing this book about her child's failed attempt to blow up Columbine High School? Boom. Right now, fifty percent of the folks who voted think the main motivator was dollar bills. Number two, with twenty-five percent of the vote, to deflect blame. Number three, with eighteen point eight percent of the vote, get attention. Get to go on Oprah, TED Talk documentaries. Lowest percentage, six point three of the voters so far, parental guilt. I think Lauren said guilt, huh? Huh? Apparently, most of our voters so far, they don't think she's wrote this out of guilt either. Uh, okie dokie, let's see. Non-Clemson grad, non-Clemson dad, pardon, mommycy woke baby. Uh, if you'll have commentary and then the other folks who are with us, proceed.
Uh, hello, can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, we didn't catch the first half hour, 'cause we were teaching, but when we came in, the epilogue was just ending with a prologue or the preface, I think it was. But we've caught, um, the book since then, and this is very interesting. Um, as for, uh, what I think about the reason this book was made, um, I think this book was made to distract from her son's duplicity, blame Eric in other alleged criminal elements, and persuade people she's not a negligent mother. She talks about her son like he was the one who was killed. Um, personally, I think she's halfway to acting like her, like her son was the one killed and her son was Emmett Till or something. Um, she referred to her son as a criminal. I guess she's not, I guess she's not, uh, ready yet to admit that her son is a mass murderer. I believe I heard that the other son is a drug addict? So, uh, basically, uh, she's batting a thousand when it comes to raising kids. Let's see, um, also, initially, when she talked about when the cops came to interview her about her son and whether or not he has bombs in the house or anything like that, and all the ridiculous, um, uh, excuses she started making, like, maybe someone convinced him to go shoot blank, um, uh, uh, guns with blank bullets, and then, you know, he didn't think the, uh, the bullets were real? As a black person, could, as a parent, as a black parent, could you imagine the police coming to your house questioning you about, um, your child's behavior or something that they think they've done? And thinking that your kid is just simply, um, this is kind of like, start making excuses like your kid would've done something this, uh, crazy, and that there's a reasonable excuse for it? Um, and let's see, and, um, with this, uh, you know, I did one of this, it's probably a bad joke, but, uh, you know, she could probably start a group of parents whose kids are mass shooters. And with that, I will mute my line.
They do have a whole documentary about that, where they gra- gather up exactly what she said, parents of school shooters, and they commiserate and share, you know, what it's like and that whole process. Should be exclusively white people, man, they did grab a black parent in there. You can even note the difference, but, yeah, they, they absolutely could. White mothers, and all talk about how we are not negligent in all of this. Hmm. Let us see, much obliged, non-Clemson dad. Uh, let's see, I'll read one email, then we'll nab other callers, this is email number two. "Greetings, Gus T., I haven't finished the introduction yet, and I already despise this book." Number one, "The introduction is one racist suspect vouching for another. She is still one of us." Absolutely, I said that, like, dang, you can go get Andrew Solomon, gay white male suspected racist, but either way, best-selling author. He gets to go out and give lectures, make a lot of money, all of that. He gets to come, that's another one. So, if, non-Clemson dad, he was some miscreant deadbeat dad, he was gonna write a book, talk about his failures as a parent, do you think they're gonna go get Michelle Alexander to cape for him? Write the introduction, talk about how, you know, the bedraggled black males had a tough time and affects his ability to parent, and in fact, we should feel sorry for him, empathize with his plight, yes. Are you serious? Anyway, uh, let's see. Oh, and, one of us, now, they had that attack in New Zealand, right, with the World Cup? I don't know if y'all saw that, white man with a gun, I think, in New Zealand, went and shot up the construction site. Now, this is the Women's World Cup, Norway was playing New Zealand. I said, oh dang, today's date, I already told you, it's July twenty in two thousand eleven. On July twenty-two, Anders Breivik bombed and shot up a lot of children in Norway. The reason I caught it on this person's first comment was he said, "She's still one of us." There is a popular non-fiction book about that bombing and shooting. I think he killed like seventy-six people total, 'cause there was the bombing, and then he went and just shot up a lot of children. But the book is called One of Us. Globally, what does it mean to be? That bombing, that has taken on a whole different significance for me after reading this book. Wow, and Oppenheimer coming out in the midst of all of this? I'm so glad she emphasized it wasn't just the police that had to come to their residence, it was the bomb squad. How many parents have that? Not just my child was into some mischief, but the bomb squad had to come to our residence. Number two, "Many racist suspects are the greatest actors." What I put up there, master deceivers and mother superior. They could almost pass for being human if you ignore all their criminality. That is what she is begging us to do in all of this. He said, uh, "Non-Clemson dad said, she said killer, not mass murderer, and really, mass child murderer, Tim McVeigh, they were calling him baby killer." Number three, "She and her husband raised a race soldier. Violence is racist, white supremacist culture, white culture. Just look at the weak, nonexistent attempts to stop those two mass murderers before and during the failed school bombing talk about it." Number four, "Mrs. Klee Bold's voice narration is a facade, my opinion, but I see and hear false emotions of guilt, sadness, and sympathy, empathy, like she is practicing a stage play." Eee, I said, doesn't this have some Alice Sebold overtones? Remember that? Lucky. Number five, "The reference of her murderous offspring's blonde hair as a halo is a way to garner more sympathy, even though she denies his blonde hair was like a halo in the same sentence." What I find stunning, so that's two books we've read where these cowardly child killers get described as having a halo. Why not horns for Satan? I think they did say, "The scent of Satan is in the-" I think they did say that, that is much closer than all this halo, and that's once again, so, I don't even remember them saying that, they, matter of fact, what they said with Michael Brown Jr. specifically, and they got in trouble with the New York Times, they said, "Michael Brown Jr., he was no, or was, 'cause he's dead then, Michael Brown Jr. was no angel." That's what they said, it wasn't no, "Oh, there's a halo around his kinky Negro head, and, oh." No, no, no. Number six, "Is this book a training manual for the parents of future mass murderers?" We shall see, because I don't care about Dylan or his family's habits other than to see patterns, and other non-white people should be aware of and counter. Could be a ma- we'll have to see, do, oh, did you all know Jeffrey Dahmer's father wrote a book? I was a little bit ashamed that I didn't know about this, but I'm still learning, but yes, Jeffrey Dahmer's father wrote a book. Reading, more important than watching screens, especially not, I mean, what are you gonna read fiction-wise? This gonna top Jeffrey Dahmer's father? Number seven, "I bet law enforcement was generally courteous to the Klee Bowls." Can you just hear? We know what would happen if they had had the complexion for the protection of the collection, of the alliteration. I suspect they were more than, I suspect they were there more for their protection. What did you just hear? Sue Klee Bold said the officer told her, "We were not there thinking that you were some criminal and harboring bombs and fugitives, we wanted to make sure you didn't harm yourself, we protect your white life." Number eight, "People coming to help and giving them food and water, interesting." Every, that, see, every time, it doesn't matter, you can shoot up the church, shoot up the school, the grocery store, whatever. We got you. Grilled cheat, we got you. Water, we got you. Roast beef, we got you. You got Negroes who are innocent and have committed no crime, they got children who go by the fire department and, "Hey, can we get water, I gotta blood and those, get outta here, coon." Ah, Emmett Till. Let's see, Z's mom, did you have commentary to share, Z's mom?
Can I be heard?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, greetings. Um, I, there was one thing I wanted to say that I hope hasn't been said already, but I was just thinking about it today, how odd it is that Tom Klee Bold said that Dylan was his best friend, but then I think when the police had asked him, he said he hadn't been in his room for at least two weeks, which I thought was really odd, because, I mean, in general, if you're a parent, I would suspect that you would at least be in your child's room. I, I mean, at the very least, to even just say goodnight to them or something, but to not be in there for two weeks, that seems very odd, especially if you consider your child to be your best friend. Also, I just think it's so interesting, like you were saying right now about all of the support that she was getting through Klee Bold, makes you really, makes you really think, because the Shoals, they, they had to leave Columbine, or they had to leave Colorado, I think they moved to like Texas or something. I'm pretty sure Sue or Tom, I think they still live at least in Colorado, if I'm not mistaken. Which really makes you think about, you know, 'cause in a previous article, they talked about how the Shoals were being mistreated, and even Jeff Cass kinda talks about how Mike- the Shoals were being mistreated, and even Jeff Katz kinda talks about how Mike, Michael was being mistreated and even though his child was actually a victim, so it's very interesting. That's all I have to say for now, thank you.
White people, one of us. Still classified as white. Uh, let's see, other folks, uh, Lauren, victim in New Jersey, did you all have commentary to share? You should be with us as well.
Yeah, Gus, um, uh, you know, i- i- it's definitely not a, like, you know, not anything funny, but, you know, I just thought, um, if Mike Xavier Johnson's parents wrote a book, you know, I mean, are they gonna get Morgan Freeman to do the audio read? Like, it, it just, it just wouldn't happen. And this, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tune in whether live or not and listen to this book. And I agree with that email, this book is awful and is gonna be awful. She keeps interjecting self-harm. She's trying to equate this to a mental health issue. Not an act of terrorism, not white racism, but I'll stay, uh, you know, stay locked into this book reading. Um, I, I wanna see later in this book if this suspected white racist woman. Is she gonna have any empathy or sympathy for the Harris family? Um, you know, since I got a name call, then I wanna get a metaphor in. She's been throwing, uh, the Harris killer under the bus. You know, I mean, going forward and pressing reverse. The neighbors helped their escape? I'm still processing that, and that is, that is just, that is just amazing. And how black people are always, the whole community is criminalized and accused of harboring criminals and, you know, this, the mythical code of silence and, you know, police come around trying to get information and there's no stitches in sight. Okay. As they drove around, they tried to avoid disaster terrorists? What in the world is a disaster terrorist? And ha- I mean, tourist, sorry, tourist, so disaster tourism, or tourist. Um, how, I, I mean, there's a, there's, there's a shooting going on as they're escaping, so I am assuming this is the same day, and we have more clout chasing white people running around, getting their, um, disaster tourism in? You know, just, just insane. Um, they were already mentioned, she talked to the police officer years later, who assisted in the raid of her home. I just couldn't see black people being in contact with, um, former police officers and having a cordial conversation, um, about the time they, they, they kicked in Jamal's door. You know, they kicked in Malik's door, you know, looking for drugs. I, 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 it just doesn't make any sense. She says she was brought up as a Christian and Jewish. She didn't speak of the, of Jewish in the context of race, but religion. So I don't wanna hear no other white guest get up here and act like it's a mystery if we have some racist white people that classify themselves as Jews, our clothes.
Woo, mm, 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 much obliged, yes, there's a lot of, uh, we're just gonna heap all the blame on our sick white brother, Mr. Harris, and say it was all old Eric's fault. And, uh, if we could've just got rid of old Red, which, now, e- again, now, even if we wanna say that, now, hey, they got suspended from school, breaking into the computers, hacking, and then the lockers. They got arrested felony for the vans. That's just boom, boom, those two, now, who knows with the missions and everything else that they were doing? Who knows whatever else they heard or were accused of, and then all of Dylan's other mischief. I just said, Eric spent the night at their house before then, like, what the world? What the world? You already been in trouble with this dude. I don't even know why he's allowed to stay here, much less coming in with a duffel bag and you don't even ask, what you got there? What's all that? Seems heavy enough, heavy enough he had to carry with two hands? Wow, what is that? And many of you all said, hey, I don't have the anarchist cookbook. I've never made a pipe bomb. Wow, all of this detail that we heard about making homemade napalm and the powder for the bombs and everything that you would need for all of this. If they could smell the scent of Satan in the air, somebody brings all of that into the house and there's no, what is that? What have you been doing? Amongst, from someone who already, there should be some concern, we've had serious mischief, felony mischief with you, buddy. And just throw, hell, yeah, it's all that old no count Red's fault, we just get old Red out of here. Lauren, did you have commentary you wanted to add?
Um, yes, sir, I do. May I be heard?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, thank you for allowing me to speak. I was gonna say something last time, but I forgot, um, the guy, uh, white man Andrew Solomon, his speech pattern seemed a bit unusual. He had a kind of a Truman Capote sound to him, um, uh, for this segment. Um, it said, Judy approached me, dropping her voice confidentially, she told me about a violent website Eric had made. Why didn't you tell me, I asked, genuinely baffled. She told the police, she said. I, I don't really know what to think about Judy Brown. I've said this before. I mean, she did report Eric to the police, but it seems like she united with the parents of Dylan Klebold really fast after the murder, so I'm not sure what to make of that. Um, um, Sue Klebold said, it will perhaps seem callous that my focus was so squarely on Dylan, on the question of his safety and later on, and later on, the fact of his death. But my obligation is to offer the truth to the, to the degree to which my memory will allow, even when that truth reflects badly on me. Now, she didn't say she was telling the truth. She said she was obligated to offer the truth? So, that's interesting, that's pretty slick. Um, later, it, it says, shortly after, it began to drizzle, and I saw a shelter on our doorstep with Tom Byron and our tenant Allison and Judy Brown. We clustered tightly together under the narrow ledge over our front door. It grew dark and cold suddenly, and the change in weather heightened our sense of vulnerability and our fear of what was to come. Um, she's not exactly saying she's vulnerable, but she might be, uh, she probably is effective at getting readers to think that without her coming right out and saying it. Um, she said, while my parents were Christian, well, my mother's parents were Christian, my father had been brought up in a Jewish home. Uh, my father is Jewish, that made me think of Mr. Cass's response when one of the callers asked him if Eric and Dylan were racist. And she didn't say Dylan was Jewish, she just said her father was, but it's some sort of implication. You know, uh, I don't know, I, I'm not really sure what she was getting at or why she shared that. I don't know, it just, that's what it made me think about. Um, with the lawyer, when he gets in the car and they go somewhere, they have the whole, you know, routine, the cloak and dagger routine, and the lawyer starts asking him some questions, and said he was trying to establish whether we knew of Dylan's plan. After listening to our answers, he announced he did not have one centilla of doubt. We had not. I felt a flood of relief. Though it didn't make the slightest difference in the world, I was desperate to know someone believed us. And I think that right there, that might be a large part of why she's writing this book. She wants people to believe her. Um, the definition I use for belief is accepting something with no evidence. Um, the lawyer used the phrase firestorm of hatred. And it says, firestorm of hatred, I would have cause to think of the phrase many times over the years. It would turn out to be an eerily prescient, pitch-perfect description of what was to come. I don't think that's actually what happened, but this text seems written to make the reader think it did happen. Or it shouldn't happen, not to Sue Klebold anyway. It's kinda like, um, I don't know, it, it seems like a, I'm a vulnerable, weak white woman, don't mistreat me type of text. Um, this narrative is pretty old, but it still works, so I guess why should white women stop doing it? Um, let me see. In the long hours of that night and in the following days, my mind would only occasionally light upon the idea that there were people Dylan might have hurt, but then that intolerable thought would skitter away just as fast. It shames me even now to admit this. At the time, I simply felt crazy, by many standards I was. Um, I question it when white people say or other people imply that white people feel shame. There usually is not any evidence of this, they just say it? Or, um, other people say what they think white people should feel. I think shame is an emotion, and I don't think white people collectively feel emotion in the same way that white people do. Um, and that's all I have for now. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Oh, wait, 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 that, that's not, the previous caller said something about, uh, disaster tourism. One of those Purge movies, they have murder tourism, so I don't know, it's not, uh, that crazy for white people. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Much obliged. Uh, so, Lon, that, if she, even if she wants us to believe something that there's not really any evidence to support, that's sounding like master deceiver, uh, to me, to come out here and confound our understanding, you know, poor white woman, oh. And Dave Cullen, he said the same thing. He gave that whole line, hey, your children aren't here, they're gonna hate you, that's what happened. Oh, and I said then, like, really? What? What? I think Sue Klebold, she does still live in Colorado, unless I've been misinformed. Like, we all said, or, I know, I did, I think some other folks said, do what? Show cause, like, what, put it this way, we heard about what happened to the Shoals. People showing up on their lawn in trench coats and what have you. Did that happen to the Klebolds? They would have to break it down, let me know, and in fact, even point that out. Dave Cullen included how the Klebolds were hated and all of that. He didn't say a word about what happened to the Shoals family. Barely mentioned Isaiah's name in the book. Not one of the protagonists, that's what he said. Uh, and I think this is probably comparing to Dave Cullen, so I suspect this is probably gonna be two books in a row where we do not hear, now, exactly what did Dylan say when he killed Isaiah Shoals in the library? I don't know if she's gonna mention his name specifically, but I suspect that's gonna be one that is greatly, lots of euphemisms and metaphors and lots of indirect speech, but we shall see. Uh, let me see if I can get through some of my notes quickly. Alrighty, I went, I started from the very beginning. She doesn't dedicate this book to the victims who her son killed, uh, and trying to blow up the whole school. Nope. People who feel alone, hopeless, and desperate. I don't even know what that, I mean, is that everybody? I think everybody feels alone at some time, so the book is to everybody? What kinda, to me, that just, from the very beginning, you are coming out of the gate with total nonsense. Not victims of gun violence? No, no, no. Psychopathy, no, 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 no. People who feel alone. Okay. Uh, t- 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 to... She says, interestingly, I think we didn't hear this, this is from the preface, I've cut back on most of my local volunteer commitments and focused more on participation at the national level. Now, that's one where I was thinking, ka-ching, I'm sure if you're going out nationally, they gotta fly you in from Colorado to Pensacola, Buffalo, LA, Sacramento, that's gonna be some money, so. And, 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 or, attention, you can now be, exactly what I said about Dylan. We wanna be famous, we will get a, that's natural born killer, really. Give me that camera, yes, give me a TED Talk, talk all about this, yes, I'm Sue Klebold, let me get my makeup, get my nice pink blazer and everything, come out here looking tough, got my earrings to match, I got, hey, I was a nobody. Suburban mom now, I got a bestselling book, do speaking tours, got someone to manage all of that, hey. BBC did a documentary on me, check me out, and with sympathy. Uh, let's see, why would you cut back on your volunteer work too? If you, you know, are getting paid for all of this, do more, most you can do. Let's see. They got this book, uh, translated in Portuguese, I chuckled, 'cause that's how we got here. Uh, from the introduction, Andrew Solomon, again, gay white man, just like, uh, Dave Cullen, the defects of their children, that word defect stood out to me, because I don't think there was anything defective about Dylan. I didn't hear about that, I don't know, you would have to explain what that, what that means to me. Um, but I don't think there's anything defective about Dylan or Eric Harris, unless I missed something. He says... It says, he writes, I never imagined they had egged their child onto a heinous act. I don't think anybody thought that. But I did think that their story would illuminate innumerable clear mistakes. I didn't want to like the Klebolds, that word, Mr. Fuller gives caution about that word. I don't even know what that has to do with this, we're just supposed, that's why they said, like, why are you gonna talk to this guy? Why don't you go talk to some experts, admit, hey, number one, why don't you talk to the family members? Two, why don't you talk to the police? Three, then yes, talk to some experts, Dr. Lehman, Homeland Security and all that, talk to them, so they can better understand, na, 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 and find me a gay white man. Okay, he says, uh, and see, even he slips in, he's not a doctor either, he says, the psychopathy behind the Columbine massacre could emerge in anyone's household. I do not agree, unless we're talking about the collective white psychopathy of white people? No, this is just the product of white culture. They brag about mom-making, Oppenheimer is playing right now and we are two days away. One of us, that was a bombing in Norway and a shooting, just like the Columbine boys. This, the word suburban, he says, in Sue Klebold's telling, she was an ordinary suburban mother. Even that stood out, 'cause I don't know what that, ordinary suburban. This is an environment, Dave Cullen told us, we specifically came out here to get away from the nigras and integrated schools in Denver. They knew it was gonna be a rush of white people, that's what you mean when you say that. I was an ordinary white mom, hmm, whatever that means. Let's see, she argues, good people do bad things, that all of us are morally confused, I don't know what any of that means. You don't have moral people in a system of white supremacy, ditto for good people, Mr. Fuller says that explicitly. Uh, let's see, she says she worked in the same building as parole office and had felt alienated and frightened getting on the elevator with ex-convicts, phew, then isn't that Carolyn Bryant Dunham? I'm suspect, particularly like, oh, knowing what I would think, probably a lot of negro males, like, oh my God, he's fitting to rape me, oh Lord. I say, show's getting... And then after this is, oh man, could've been Dylan, should have been Dylan. I'm even disgusted, like, if you're seeing some person that's there on a nonviolent offense, then, oh man, Dylan, what? Your son is a mass murderer, there's nobody here like your son, get out of here. Uh, let's see, even the way he describes this shooting, he says, school sho- "School shootings are the most appalling crimes of all because they involve both problems, and among school shootings, Columbine remains something of a gold standard, the ultimate exemplar to which all others are indebted." That is the type of phrasing that I would expect in a system of white supremacy where children are not valued, where it's talking about an event where thirty, it could've been five hundred people killed, easily. And this is talked about as something to be admired, the gold standard? What are you taught? He didn't even pull out the tacky, "Darkest dead," nope, "The gold standard." Ultimate, all of that suggests this is a worthy achievement, an accomplishment, which is exactly how they thought of this. Let's see. He says, "We live in a society of blame and some of the victims' families were relentless in their demand for impossible answers," in quotes, "that were being kept hidden," in quotes. That's one, wow, if I was a parent, you might've had to physically restrain me to say that in my face when, "Look here, buddy." Gay, like, he said, "No, no, name calling," like, "Oh, man, ooh, I'm gonna have to keep my mouth closed." Like, "Look here, the police should've been criminally indicted for hiding evidence, and this started from day one, don't get out here talking no nonsense." Like, are you serious to even put that down in the book? Hidden, yes, it was years of deliberate white, I said, there should be whole books just about the police corruption in, in years of willful police corruption? And yes, hiding, destroying evidence, so, yes, and the parents were not forthcoming. They didn't talk to the police, hmm, hmm, hmm. I don't know, can we get immunity? Hmm, hmm, I don't know, hmm, hmm. Like, even Cullen wrote about that, like, "We really are not interested in hearing about what a sweet, loving boy Dylan is." Like, "Let's talk about that essay, man." Anyway, let's see, get back to the notes. Uh... Blame it, get out of here, uh... Oh, he says, "The coolness of their deception, most parents think they know their children better than they do. The children who don't want to be known can keep their inner lives very private." Now, that's another one. If we had not read Cullen's book, had Jeffrey Kass on the program, Dr. Flower, Dr. Angeline Spalding Flowers, and many other guests done our homework, that's another one, like, don't you insult me, uh, Andrew Solomon, Sue Klebold either, get some gay white man to come and talk nonsense, uh, to me, like, hey, "That dude coward, your cowardly white child wrote a paper about exactly what he did, going out and shooting up the school, the teacher calls you both in and you sitting off." You just got a vivid imagination, you're exaggerating. This is days before the shooting, after everything else that's happened? They, Jeffrey Kass had in his book, when he got into the University of Arizona, the teachers at Columbine were surprised. I've never even heard that before, how do you have somebody get in the school, particularly a white dude? And it's, "What? You got in the what? Jesus, what is going on? Affirmative action, I don't, man, he was flunking gym, didn't they say that? Come on, man, come on." Uh, he says, "Eric appears to have been a homicidal psycho," that, 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 see, that's right there. I said before, I'm just not picking that up, you're not gonna have every gay white man just come and tell me, "Eric was a psychopath, Eric was a psychopath, so that we can blame this on him," and then say Dylan was depressed. From people who are not even psychologists, no, I'm not, I'm rejecting all of that, unless we're saying this is collective white psychopathy, and I'm even including Sue Klebold for writing this old raggedy book here, unless that's how we're talking about it? Nope, 'cause this is just white culture, there's nothing special about Eric, Dylan, nothing. And everybody said that. Particularly about Dylan, my God, they said that over and over. What was special about him? I agree, nothing special at all. What does it mean to be white? And Dr. Flower said that too, "Don't slip and put this on mental illness, 'cause most of these folks, they are not." Sue Klebold said that too, "They are not mentally ill, they are classified as white." Let's see. "Oh, my God, Eric might have lost motivation without the thrill of dragging Dylan down with him." What in the Christ? What are you even talking about? Or this another, where do you even have evidence of that? Dragging metaphors and all of that? Again, that's another one, if all of us had seen the basement tapes, that would be a tough one to even put that on the paper, like, "Are you serious?" Let's see. I said that about the word love, I think Lauren talked about that too, love being in Dylan's journal, big to-do, I don't even know what he meant by all that, he called us zombies a lot too. Let's see. He said, "Most people have felt an occasional flash of murderous rage towards someone with whom they are intimate." I had a serious pause there, I mean, I've had disagreements and such with a lot of people, but I mean, murderous rage? Like, I, I'm particularly, you're saying intimate now, I don't know, do you mean sexual intercourse or murderous? We're like, no, no, I do not feel like I want to kill, much less, we're talking, "Ah, I think I wanna kill at least two hundred fifty of you all." Like, "What? What?" Much less writing about this all the time and such as Dylan and Eric were. Uh, let's see, the nobility of this book, I highlighted that too, like, what the Christ are you even talking about? Uh, let's see, he includes that tacky, that, see, this book was written in two thousand sixteen? I think they seriously took advantage of the fact that by this point, people's memories are bad. Even Jeffrey Kass, when he was here talking on Monday, he could've been practicing racism, and I have heard some of these folks, we are talking about things that happened twenty-five years ago, everybody's memory fades. Randy Brown even said he forgot, you know, some of the details about this, it's been decades. Felony arrest, uh, they are taking advantage of the fact that you got a whole generation of people, they really don't know anything about this case, much less all the details that you would get even from reading a book like Dave Cullen's with its inaccuracies. Much less, people who might have been around that time and they read inaccurate reports and whatever else, they were bullied, blah, 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 or, they didn't even do that, they watched Bowling for Columbine and that's it. They can super exploit, a lot of people probably don't know these details, particularly outside the state of Colorado? We will clean house, we can just say whatever we want to, and, New York Times bestseller. Uh, let's see. They said they would ask, Tom would ask Dylan, "What the hell were you thinking? Did you read the teacher's essay where they called you in for a conference where he wrote about the dude in a trench coat killing everybody? That's what he was thinking." Let's see, I, they gotta tell me, if that's not mentioned in this book, like, oh, man, oh, man, are you serious? Are you serious? Uh, let's see, "I'd ask him, forgive me for," oh, yeah, get out of here, what a lame, uh... "The darkest self," see, then, we gotta begin, that term is used so consistently in this case, where they will say, "Darkest this, darkest that." I don't understand why that has to be included. Let's see, let's see, she said, oh, my, he, not he, excuse, oh, and he gotta take up so much, like, Jesus Christ, why is it so long? He says, uh, "The mother of a killer and the loss of the fundamental belief that life is subject to logic." What? "That if you do things right, you can forestall certain grim outcomes." There is zero evidence that the Klebolds did things right, whatever that means. I mean, zero. And in fact, she mentioned that diversion program, Jesus Christ, Jeffrey Kass included the details about that. They said amongst five hundred clients to go through that program, there were fifteen who got early termination. How in the Christ are Eric fucking Harris and Dylan Klebold two of the fifteen exceptions? Somebody should be fired or criminally charged. What the, and I don't wanna hear no nonsense about, "Ooh, they fooled us, they were so deceptive." No, if these had been niggers, Eric Harris wrote on the form, "They had a box, are you feeling homicidal?" He checked, "Yes." How do you get early termination and you check homicidal on the box? Dylan Klebold didn't even do his community service, his mom, Sue Klebold, had to go and talk to the people, like, "Oh, he's so wholesome, he's so pure, he's white, come on." And they passed him out of the program, Jeffrey Kass wrote about that. He didn't even do what was needed to complete the program. Why isn't that a red flag? Hey, man, felony arrest here, do the right thing, behave, all that was, no, there's zero evidence they did the right thing, zero. Oh, it's so disgraceful. Let's see, preface, all that to get through Solomon, preface, uh, 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 oh, my, I'll never know, what a liar, you're such a liar. Uh, that Randy Brown said that, they were at the funeral, Randy Brown said, "This book is a total lie." I would agree so far, every page of it. Uh, that, that, attentive and engaged, if that's true, that paper should have set off all types of alarms, and in fact, you really wanna tell me that you're noble and courageous? You'd be quoting from that paper. That's days, but that's, that's exactly what was on your child's mind, and a teacher even told you, "Hey, this is the worst, most disturbing paper I've ever read." A white dude in a trench coat killing people and gloating about it, thinking that this is a godly thing to do. What in the world? And you totally ignored it. You're not engaged. Let's see, let's see. She had the audacity to mention Charleston in this book, I thought that was so tacky. Talking about, uh, Dylan, another Dylan going to shoot up the church. With no detail. Let's see. "She missed subtle signs of psychological deterioration." I ju, I totally reject that, like I said, that, uh, paper, amongst many other things that was, they go, "You're failing gym?" That in and of itself, like, I don't know about you all, if I had come home and was looking like I was about to even get a D in gym, my mother and my father would have flipped out, like I said, "You don't wanna put on your gym shorts." How do you get a D in gym? You ser, you don't wanna put on your gym shorts. Let's see, she says, uh, "She talked to all these experts," again, if you're such a pariah, everyone hates you, "How would all of these experts presumably talk to you free of charge and willingly to give you their white expertise? Why would that, even Andrew Solomon, why would that be? She's still one of us." Uh, let's see. Spirit of inquiry, oh, she's so disgusting, chapter one, I can't believe this, uh, 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 uh. "The one time Dylan had been in serious trouble," we already know he was suspended from school twice, is that not ser- I don't know, maybe if you're white, being suspended from school is not serious trouble. I think hacking into the school computers and then breaking into students' lockers, I think that's serious. I think scrolling slurs on a student's locker, particularly if you're gonna come back and tell me some nonsense about bullying, I think that's serious. Real talk, I think flunking gym is kinda serious too, 'cause that's just, I mean, wow, it's lazy? And then, wow, you can't even put your gym shorts on? They're teasing, I got, oh, I got, they're calling you fag in gym, I got it, my bad. They even said, when he did put his gym shorts on, they got that in the Jeffco files, "You put your gym shorts on to go and shove females and called them a bitch." Got it. Maybe keep your gym shorts off and just take the D in class. Uh, let's see. "All this lying, this is a stunt and a prank." How many times have we gone here that this was a prank from, woo, white culture? Uh, let's see. "I told you they went to the University of Arizona, I told you his teachers were stunned." Uh, that's in Kass's book, that he even got accepted there, and given what we read in Cullen's book, agree. We said that, if this was a black person, how would he even get in school? Somebody even said that, like, whoa, talk about affirmative action, Jesus. Uh, what kinda school is the University of Arizona? Is this just like a party school, they don't do academics there, you just go and, everything is like basket weaving? Let's see, go Wildcats. Uh, let's see. "The shock of our lives, our well-mannered, organized kid, the kid we never had to worry about had broken into a parked van and stolen electronic equipment. As a result, he'd been put on probation, he completed the, see, 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 that right there." Tell the truth, Sue Klebold, man, he didn't even complete the program. Kass said he went, I mean, they're supposed to do, I think, like, forty hours, I mean, I don't even think he did ten. Tell the truth, man, therefore, and he was doing so bad at school, his, uh, probation officer was fussing, that's what I'm saying, "How did you get through this program early? You're being fussed at, you're about to fail gym, that's a part of it." They said you're not supposed to, nothing, not even shaving cream on the banister, certainly not flunking gym. Nope, early termination. Uh, let's see. She said, "The first time we heard anything about explosives," I'm highlighting that as possibly false, uh, just becau- and, when we had Kass on the program Monday, I wasn't even happy about that program, which is the case most times. He said that Attorney Michael Figur said that, when that duffel bag comes in and all of that, he said, now, he said there wasn't evidence, but they said, "Hey, we got our project going on the garage, don't come out there." He said, "Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir, we ac, mhm, right, right, Dylan's got a project in the garage, everybody, don't go in the garage." Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but I told you, Eric stayed over, like, what the hell? Who cares if he brought Pop-Tarts over? This dude is felony arrest, how is that? Okay, Z, get any of you all, woke baby, once she's old enough, Z, if she gets arrested with a child, is that child gonna be allowed to come over and spend the night at your house subsequently? And suspended from school, same child. Huh. Let's see, seems like wrap my notes up, was Dylan interested in explosive? Even that about the fireworks, like, man, I would like to see the whole train, I wish they had, like, uh, the body cameras, I would like to see exactly what she said, because she has a habit of saying things and then redacting and changing to remove culpability. Kass talked about that repeatedly and about this incident specifically, and saying, "There's not enough detail." What do you mean? Guns and ex, like, what? What? Fascination, and particularly, given that paper that he turned in. Uh, 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 uh. She's wigging about the website when Judy Brown comes over, that's totally irrelevant. Like, "At this point, there should be more than enough evidence that there are major problems, both with your child and his interaction with Eric Harris." I mean, you've got tons of evidence, at this point, the website is just, I mean, "How much of the cow do you need to eat before you realize it's steak?" Metaphor. She says that all of his friends not thinking that he could've been involved. All I can say is that apparently many of these folks, just being a white person, being into explosives, talking about killing black people, uh, blowing up things, having firearms, these are things that they were known to be into and talking about, apparently, none of this stuff, what I said before, it's not abnormal behavior if you're classified as white, that's what you're telling me, got it. Uh, let's see, chapter two, mm, mm, mm. "I even think her making emphasis of the fact that she was thinking he was gonna zoom up in his dented, old, black BMW he fixed up with his dad," like, all of that, like, okay, so, even though it's a BMW, don't think that this is a top-of-line car or anything, it's old, it's beat up, it's dented, it's rusted, the muffler's fallen off, and, get to add in a little bit wholesome family, he would work on it and fix it up, put the muffler back on with old Dad. If that's the case, you all certainly could've talked about that crazy paper he wrote, right? "In a Jewish home, I fell out laughing with that, 'cause I just, what? The full sentence is, while my mother's parents were Christian, my father had been brought up in a Jewish home. So my siblings and I were raised in both traditions." I don't know what that means. And I even substituting it for the times when people conflate being so-called Jewish with a racial classification, "If someone had said, 'I grew up in a black home,' I would hope you would look at them curiously, maybe even, wow." Maybe even, wow, you saying something racist? What is a black home? Or, I grew up in a white home. What does that mean? Anyway, uh, let's see. She said, I had lost my faith, I was afraid to attract God's attention to further draw down his wrath. That's what your child had on after he shot up the school, man. I know she meant that deliberately or what, but I certainly, that's, see, that's what I said, she waited so long, I suspect a lot of people, because they don't know that. They don't even know Eric Harris's shirt had natural selection on it, so, uh, uh, uh. Uh, let's see. She has to emphasize that the people that came out, they were all ages, sizes, and races. We're not races, we're Jewish. We love everybody. Everybody came out to bring us roast beef sandwiches and give us water and set up the escape route so we could get away from the bomb squad and the paparazzi? In the suburbs? Where it was five niggers at the school. Yes, you had all races. It's one race. Already talked about the protection from the Belize. As we finished loading the car, some of our neighbors showed, oh, we got the roast beef sandwiches. Sign to go, they got the escape. Tom contacted the police immediately. That was in Cullen's book? Like, ooh, we, yes, old wacky Dylan, that paper, yes, maybe we should call an attorney. Uh, she keeps saying we are the last people in the world. Um, I, I mean, that's just not true. I mean, I don't even, even to keep saying that under any circumstances, that's not true. And you just, you got the roast beef, where did you get the roast beef sandwich from? How did, whose house are you staying? What are you talking about? What are you talking about? Like, I don't even know what you're talking about. You have so much support, uh, and help from so many, all different sizes and shapes and races, so what are you talking about, that you're the last people in the world? No, you're not. You have lots of help. You're still one of us. It's so much lying to get sympathy, like, as she said, I'm vulnerable, we're so, no, you're not. No, you're not. Uh, let's see. All this firestorm of hatred, that's a metaphor, I don't know what that means, I don't see any evidence of that. And I've not seen any evidence of that over the past 25 years. It's been from day one, literally, it's been roast beef sandwiches, hugs, TED Talks, Oprah Winfrey, Dave Cullen and others, shill for her all the time. Read her article, read her book, check out her documentary, isn't she great? Isn't she awesome? That's what I've seen. I've not seen any, Sue Klebold is lame and racist and a degenerate parent, and she's got two generations of degenerate chi, I've never heard anyone say that. She said, even the word suburban again, the incongruity of a triage center set up on a suburban front lawn, yes, on a white lawn. If this had been in Nigreville, yeah, they'd gun and shoot each other down, but, oh my God, this, in a white neighborhood, and it's our fault. Oh, oh. Okay, that's all my notes. Have to do better, child. Can't believe it, lots of, I would not have had all of this to think if we had not done our research on this book. I said, reading, you can learn a lot about how white people practice deception. This exemplary illustration deception, every page, every paragraph, particularly if it were 2027 and we were reading this book and we had the deposition to see what they said to the parents, oh, man. Maybe we'll revisit if we're all alive, healthy, uh, I don't know, hopefully we'll be in a system of justice, so it'll be even more fun to do our research. How about that? We'll be here tomorrow, neutralizing workplace racism, hopefully has been constructive for people's Thursday evening. Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other victims of white supremacy. We ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. No name-calling, no throwaway offspring. Cow signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.
Good evening, I'm Diane Sawyer. Tonight, the mother of a killer is going to speak. Her son, one of the shooters at Columbine High School nearly two decades ago. And for all these years, especially for the families of the victims, those urgent and anguished questions, could these parents have prevented that massacre? What did they miss? And are they parents like us? A note tonight, Sue Klebold has written a book called A Mother's Reckoning, and the money will go to the mental health crisis in America. Also, on the advice of experts, we're going to be very selective in what we show and do not show about the shooting and the shooters, especially now that over and over again, we wake up to another one. But before Sandy Hook, before Virginia Tech, it seems to have begun with Columbine.
It is 1999, a shockwave hits America. Two high school boys in trench coats carrying shotguns, a semi-automatic weapon, and homemade bombs walk into their school and begin the slaughter of their classmates, who were sitting on the grass eating their lunch, who were hiding under tables, no defense from the terror. Thirteen are killed, 24 are wounded, and we are all watching for the first time. Children run out of their school fleeing mayhem. For the first time, we see a wounded student struggling out the window of his high school to escape with his life. And for the years to come, we would all be asking the same questions. Who were these killers? And what kind of parents could produce children like these?
Someone wasn't doing their job.
For 17 years now, the parents of Dylan Klebold and Eric Harris have lived their secrets, unwilling to step forward, until a gray-haired woman makes her way into a room. In the course of this day, at one point, we see her pacing, perhaps grappling with her decision to step forward after all these years hiding from cameras, years of being hated and threatened, she says, afraid and ashamed.
Everyone's phones are off.
Sue Klebold is now 66 years old.
For the families of 13 people who died and 24 people who were injured, most of them children.
Yes.
What is it you want to say to them?
The one thing, of course, that I want to say is, I am so sorry for what my son did. Yet I know that just saying, I'm sorry, is such an inadequate response to all this suffering. There is never a day that goes by where I don't think of the people that Dylan harmed, and I-
You use the word harmed.
Harmed, I think it's easier for me to say harmed than killed, and it's still hard for me, after all this time.
Is that about a certain need to deny what happened, or?
I don't know, perhaps, perhaps. Um, it is very hard to live with the fact that someone you loved and raised has brutally killed people in such a horrific way. The last moments of his life were spent in violence, sadism, you know, he was cruel and hateful and, um, and I have to own that. I just remember sitting there and reading about them. All these kids, and the teacher. And I keep thinking, constantly thought, how I would feel if it were the other way around and one of their children had shot mine. I would feel exactly the way they did, I know I would. I know I would.
You blame the parents for being- For all the parents who have said, I would have known something.
I know.
I would have just known.
Before Columbine happened, I would have been one of those parents. I think we like to believe that our love and our understanding is protective, and that if anything were wrong with my kids, I would know. But I didn't know. And I wasn't able to stop his hurting other people, and I wasn't able to stop his hurting himself. And, uh, it's very hard to live with that.
Called him the sunshine boy?
We did, when he was little, yeah. He had this sort of a mane of golden hair, and it was just always sick and round, and he was such a happy, precocious, brilliant little child.
She seems to be trapped in a contradiction. The son she once had, the murderer he became. She has written a book called A Mother's Reckoning. In it, she says all the lessons of her regret, which began on the day she woke up an ordinary wife and mother. Fast forward 24 hours, and I was the mother of a hate-crazed gunman. On April 20th, she was at the office where she works helping disabled college students. Right after noon, 12:05, her husband Tom, a geophysicist who works from home, calls and says it's an emergency.
His voice sounded horrible, jagged, breathless. Something terrible is going on at the school.
I don't know what's your emergency?
He tells her, two killers wearing trench coats are shooting kids at Columbine High School. One of Dylan's friends has called worried that Dylan might be involved. He wasn't there for morning class, and he wears a trench coat. Tom races through the house, hoping against hope, to find that coat.
You always think somebody's making a mistake.
It's not there.
My first thought was Dylan may be in danger. You know, what, who are these people that are hurting people?
She has to drive 26 miles to get home, thoughts racing.
Hyperventilating, trying to chalk myself down.
She arrives home. It's official, her son Dylan is believed to be one of the shooters, and the shooting may not be over yet. In that moment, she says, a searing prayer, no parent thinks they could ever pray.
The police were there and the helicopters were going over. And I remember thinking, if this is true, if Dylan is really hurting people, he has to, somehow, he has to be stopped. And then, at that moment, I prayed that he would die, that, God, stop this, just make it stop. Don't let him hurt anybody.
And so her quest begins. She says she goes back over every year of her life with a magnifying glass, looking for the path of her son's descent and the clues to all the things she missed.
He talks about looking weird and-
He was a tall, gawky kid with glasses.
But he has friends, goes out to parties, Friday night bowling. She says some of his friends decide it's cool to look different from the jocks, they buy long, black coats.
But didn't you wonder why he wanted a trench coat? What was that about?
Well, I was the kind of kid who loved to look different. I mean, I, I was an art major.
She says she does notice something, that Dylan seems to be losing interest in good grades. He builds his own computer and spends more time alone in his room. And sometimes he's moody and irritable. But she now says, as she looks back over her life, she is making a big mistake. Her son is changing, but she writes off the changes as an adolescent phase.
Sometimes he would seem, you know, distant or quiet, and I remember asking him, are you okay? Are you sure you're okay? You seem so tired. And he'd stand up and say, I've got a lot of homework, I just, I need to go to bed.
And you let it go.
And I let it go. And that's the difference. I would dig, if it were me today, I would dig and dig and dig. I mean, I, I had all those illusions that everything was okay, because, and more than anything else, because my love was him, for him was so strong. I felt that I was a good mom, that he would, he could talk to me about anything. Part of the shock of this was, was that learning that what I believed and how I lived and how I parented was, um, an invention in my own mind.
She says she hopes other parents watching tonight will think about what a child can be hiding. It's the summer after Dylan's sophomore year, long before Columbine. She has a journal, and in it she's writing, things have been really happy this summer, Dylan is yucking it up, having a great time with friends. She has no idea, her 15-year-old son has begun a secret journal of his own, and his first entry is this, thinking of suicide. I hate my life, I want to die. I have a nice family, good house, couple of good friends, no girls, nobody accepting me, even though I want to be accepted. He plays the Nine Inch Nails song Hurt and makes a list of all the people he loves who will never love him back.
I'm Dylan.
You can see him in this video, his junior year at Columbine. He seems self-conscious, a little wistful, but talks about the future, the classes he'll take to help get into college.
So, you get better chances after high school as far as college goes? Maybe a scholarship? Okay, let me ask you this, are you an independent learner or group learner? Uh, probably independent.
But at this point, we want to be very clear, 80 to 90% of depression can be treated, and even suicidal depression is not an explanation or a pathway to violence. But more than 17 years ago, Sue Klebold says she knew so little about teen depression, thinking the big problem in her house was her older son grappling with drugs.
Were you distracted?
Well, of course, because we're human. I mean, we all have things that distract us. She can't say I was too busy to notice that my son was falling apart.
And heading down a path of destruction.
Could you have prevented what happened to Columbine?
If I had recognized that Dylan was experiencing some real mental distress, he would not have been there. He would have gotten help. I don't ever for a moment mean to imply that I'm not conscious of the fact that he was a killer, because I am.
A year and a half before the Columbine massacre, her son is a junior, a series of troubling events. He hacks into the school computer system with some friends, they're all suspended for three days. He scratches an epithet on the locker of a kid he thinks is taunting him, then the big shock. On the same day he makes that video talking about his future, he and another kid break into a van, steal electronic equipment, and police make an arrest.
This is a felony, two felony counts.
It was terrible, I know, absolutely. It was awful. And at the time, I thought that was the worst thing I could ever possibly experience.
Dylan's cold reaction after the arrest scared and shocked her. He acted as if he had done nothing wrong. She says she gave him one of her lectures, trying to reason with him.
I even talked about the Ten Commandments, I said it's wrong to steal, and no circumstances is this, this right. Uh, and then we responded as most parents would, we, uh, we took away privileges.
She says a lot of days, he was affectionate, planning for the future, applying to colleges. She didn't know, he was writing in his journal, how he wanted to get a gun to use on a poor SOB, himself. One night, she's frustrated, he's not doing chores, he's withdrawn, she thinks he needs more discipline. She pushes him against the refrigerator.
And I said, you know, you've got to stop thinking of yourself, you've got to stop being so selfish, but, excuse me, but, uh, I gave him the old mom lecture. And then I said, and by the way, today's Mother's Day, and you forgot it. And I don't remember how that confrontation ended, I just remember he softly said, Mom, please don't push me, I'm, I don't know how, how much I can control myself. It wasn't, it wasn't a scary thing, it was just him being nice to say, back off, please.
She says she blamed herself for pushing him too far.
And then he went out and he got me a gift, a little, it was a little water cane with African violets in it. And I thought everything was fine, because he was so, he was so sweet.
And inside, on his way to becoming a mass shooter. And Dylan Klebold writes, he now has a choice, committing suicide or going NBK with Eric. NBK, Natural Born Killers, the violent revenge movie by Oliver Stone. Which brings us to the central question about Dylan Klebold. Why did he go from suicidal to homicidal? Did Eric infect him with a kind of pathological virus? Or was it Dylan's presence that reinforced Eric's violent fantasies? We have talked to scientists all over the country who are studying how thoughts of violence could rewire the still-developing teenage brain. But Mary Ellen O'Toole says all we know tonight is Dylan was now deeply disturbed.
And it was more than just depression.
Do you think Dylan Klebold knew right from wrong?
Yes, absolutely, he did. But it did not preclude him.
Do you think he also had another mental disorder?
Possibly, I think that's possible.
We're a community in shock.
The media attention around the country, let me just read you some of the headlines. Full bloodbath, Eric Harris, Dylan Klebold.
The Klebolds flee their house, living, she says, like desperate nomads, despairing, the surreal agony of cremating her son, the agony of the funerals of his victims. In her journal, she writes, I was worried about losing my sanity. After several weeks, she goes back to the state community college system.
I would turn on a radio, and people would be talking about me and calling me a disgusting person.
She says a saving grace, the friends who still believed in them. When they were in hiding, their neighbors posted a sign on the driveway, Sue and Tom, we love you, we're here for you, call us. And her colleagues at work helped camouflage her presence, no sign on the door.
But you could have escaped with a different name?
I did think about it. But the real thing that it, I finally realized was that I can't run from this. Changing my name and moving doesn't allow me to leave this behind.
She says for months and- She says for months and months, her mind was looking for any way to deny the truth. Maybe Dylan was on drugs, maybe he was forced to be there. She reached out to the victims' families, writing letters, but calling the incident a moment of madness.
I believe this was a moment of madness. I believe this was some impulsive fluke that happened suddenly.
Catherine Massey Book Club, Context of White Supremacy. So, wow, didn't she? Man, oh man, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share one, I get our emails, then we'll get our callers. Number 720-716-7300, decode 564-943, pound, press star 61 if you have commentary. Now, I said before, we'll be in such a great position to read this book now. We've done so much studying, we've talked to so many of the different Columbine experts, right? Over the past few months, even people from different parts of the world. We know a lot more detail about what happened with all of this. Now, I've said, they have news reports, depends on how much research you want to do on this. How much do you want to read, how much do you want to study? They have news reports where, from that first week, you can see a lot of the coverage. Now, I said, I thought I was cool, I had the six-hour report. I started digging, the white people had the six-hour report. They got the 12-hour report of the news, news coverage from just those first two, three days of when all of this happened in April 99. I have actually seen one of the interviews that Sue Klebold's hairdresser did. It's like, wow, I can't believe it, I saw her talk to the press. I don't remember her talking to the press about the fact that relatives of one of the other victims who was murdered also came to the salon to get a touch-up. I don't remember that. I do remember the white woman at the salon saying, huh, you know, Sue said, man, you know, we're Jewish? Passover and all that, we do Hanukkah? What do you mean racist? They're running around here saying that, my, what, what? That stood out to me immediately, I mean, when I heard it then, it's just, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. But that she goes into the book, and it's all this, she's whimpering in the bowl and barely sit up and, ooh, and they come in, her friends, white homies come to hold my hand and all of this, and I don't know if I'm gonna be able to pay, and the other victim came, like, wait. And she had just said, literally, paragraph before, I was waiting for it to come up immediately because she had just said that. We're Jewish, what do you mean? He's racist and crazy and called Isaiah Scholz a nigger, what, what, what do you mean? We're not rape, what, no? Sue something, didn't she? Number again, 720-716-7300, decode 564-943, pound, press star 61 if you would like to participate. That might, I have to see how much does that pluck my nerves? If I'm willing to go back to dig through some of that media footage to find that, because that's the sort of thing I would play, like, next week or something, like, see, see? She didn't say anything about another victim, all of that, she was, he was not racist, what do you mean? Same thing we heard from Jeff Kat, they were racist, no, no, what do you mean? They weren't racist, what do you mean? Yeah, yeah. Uh, number again, 720-716-7300, decode 564-943, pound, press star 61 if you would like to participate. So goofy, I was just telling the victim, like, Sue, uh, Sue Africa, Sue Africa, pfft, all the Sues are lame. Sue Klebold and Sue Africa, I guess, too, they're all into that kind of new agey thing that's real big out here in the west, other areas too, west coast of the US. The, what will I say? The, the secret that book, if people are familiar, uh, and the laws of attraction, you know, if you don't talk about racism, then it won't be a problem for you. If you go around talking about racism, then you'll just be lynched and bonked on the head and called a nigger all the time, it's just what you, you know, attract. That sort of thought is real big amongst the, the crystals and all that, real big thing out here. Chapter five, the title is Premonition, that's what I mean when I say New Age. Get you some magic beans and all the rest of it, New Age, mushrooms, New Age. Uh, so, listener wrote in, the email address, untiljustice@gmail.com, untiljustice@gmail.com. If you have emails, you can write in, and we'll share as we proceed. Even if you're listening to the archives, you can write in, we'll share as we roll. Email number one, this is our caller, I've named her the Fresh Princess of Philadelphia, you'll see why. She writes, uh, hi Gus, I listened to all the programs from last week. Uh, I will say, the man from the UK, Andrew Gumbel, gave a good interview about Timothy McVeigh. I recall watching the Waco, Kansas City bombing and O.J. Simpson verdict, uh, and part of, then part of the trial in school. The episodes have been like a trip down memory lane in terms of historic events with context. Sue Klebold wants sympathy, and I refuse to give it to her. She wrote this book to save face, and she made sure enough time passed before she wrote it. So, this book was published in 2016, almost 20 years. The opening chapters of the book sound like BS. What was the lunacy she was talking about? Some type of angelic or spiritual beings leading her to the next part of her life? It was super weird and self-aggrandizing. How did the husband immediately know the son was at school raising hell? But this woman never suspected her golden boy of anything? If anything, she was willfully blind, and willful blindness is negligence. I say criminal negligence in this here case. She's a negligent parent. She expects us to believe that Eric is to blame for everything and that he dragged their son down. Yet Eric was never banned from their home or restricted from having contact with Dylan. They had a slumber party before Columbine went down. I don't think most people feel sorry for or believe this woman's story, seeing as though her TED Talk and most other videos with her have the comments turned off. Hmm, as far as what kind of good-for-nothing people flunked Jim, like Dylan? Well, I flunked Jim in the 10th grade because, no, I didn't want to change into my gym clothes, get sweaty, and mess my hair for the day, see, fresh princess. Although I was displaying delinquent behavior, I did not make any bombs, so she tells us, purchase any illegal firearms, or attack any of my classmates, again, so she tells us. Much obliged, uh, for sharing, I definitely think Sue wants heaps and heaps of sympathy, and no blame for any of this, we would, I think she would vigorously agree. She might bop you upside the head, like, wait a minute, you uppity Philadelphia negroes, you don't come in here and tell me I'm a negligent parent. We did everything, but we drove him to college, to Arizona, and we went to the school meetings. We were not negligent, we had a bright, gifted child, my sunshine boy. You don't tell me we were negligent, what's wrong with you? Email again, untiljustice@gmail.com. They talk about the origami, if you watch, man, if you watch the documentary about this, that came out the same year, she talks about the origami and, woo, new age negligence. Number again, 720-716-7300, decode 564-943, pound, press star 61 if you have commentary, let's see. Find out by our switchboard, we'll get some of the folks who dialed in who have, there we go. Folks who dialed in, they have commentary to share, uh, let's see. Z's mommy should be with us, nab on her hands as we see him.
Greetings, can I be heard?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, I thought that, I, that part stuck out to me too, about the, um, hairdressers, that, I, I feel like she put that in there, that there was another, like, that a victim's mom came. It's like she put that in there to maybe justify why she went to the hairdresser. I thought that part was interesting. I also, I noticed in that part, she said something about the, she, she was gonna pay with the money that the Browns had let her. So, I'm wondering, did Randy and, um, Judy Brown give her money? Or is it a different Browns, I'm not aware of? And maybe that's part of the lies that Randy said that this book is full of, because I thought that would be very odd if they gave her money, but maybe that was a part of the book that I had missed. Um, I also thought it was weird when they said, um, Dylan was a quote-unquote hater. I don't know what that means, like, I think she's trying to say, people thought he was a racist, but, or he was racist, but instead she keeps, she said, he was a hater, um, that was interesting. And then she tries to say that, um, he had just, we had, um, I guess, like, a Jewish ceremony at her house. So, how, I don't know how that correlates to him being racist, or him being especially racist towards a black person, doesn't make any sense. Um, also, it's interesting that she keeps using that, because, like, in, kind of like, traditional Jewish culture, or like Jewish law, her mom was not Jewish, so she's not even Jewish, because that's how it usually runs. It's, her dad was Jewish and her mom was, I think, some form of, I don't know, what, some form of Christian religion, so. I think that's interesting in general, but, um, she's very skilled in her word usage. I thought it was, she's very good at, um, very much like, making the type of, making Dylan being a murderer and, you know, trying to bomb the school, she called him a criminal at first. And like, I, I, when I think of a criminal, I think of maybe somebody who's like robbing a house or a bank robber, like, this is a different type of criminality, like, this is a much different tier. Like, this is not just murder, but this is like mass murder, also like, you know, a bombing that could have happened, so. I thought the use of the word criminal was very interesting. In general, she uses a lot of terms that, uh, I guess we would call pussyfooting, like, not saying explicitly what needs to be said. Um, that's all I'll say for now, thank you.
Great point, she does cite the Browns specifically as giving her money for, uh, just, you know, so she could have cash, so she wouldn't have to identify herself with credit cards and checks when she goes out to make payments. Uh, I'm, was just trying to look back to see if they got named, uh, in the text when she gives a little short list of people who were gonna be there for the funeral, but I think Judy and, uh, Ron Brown were present for the funeral. I don't, Brooks might have been there too, but I think at least Judy and Ron were there at the funeral, so it would not surprise me at all if the Browns gave them money. Um, I think they were at the, they were, they were close, you know? I think Dylan and Brooks had been friends since, like, kindergarten, or at least elementary school, like, years and years. So, I think they had known each other for quite some time, and white people look out, you know, for each other, man, roast beef sandwiches and all the rest of it, so. Yeah, does that, does that, does that make sense? Do you recall any of that? Um, because I think even Dave Cullen pointed it out, that I think they went to the funeral. Do you, I think I even played the segment, they did go to the funeral, I have to find it in the book, but they did go to the funeral, does that seem a little more palatable?
Yes, they, yeah, I remember they went to the funeral. I think I also remember Judy was at her house when, I think the police were there when she first found out that Dylan had committed this massacre. I might be mistaken, but, so, I, I, it does make sense, but, it makes the Browns positioning in this very interesting, because it seemed like they were critical of, um, Sue, but then it seems like they've been, um, very supportive of her too.
You are correct, and again, you don't get picked, kicked off of the white team, it's very hard. Um, there's still one of, I think she said that last week, one of us. And I've heard Judy and Ron Brown, uh, say that, Randy Brown, I said Ron, Randy Brown, I've heard them say that, um, many times in interviews that they've given over the years, that we were friends, we were cool, our children, uh, were close, Dylan was at our house bunches of times, we went to the funeral. Um, and she even writes, uh, Sue Klebold, she writes in chapter two, Judy offered to host us at her house. This is after Brooks Brown, he could have been killed that day, their son. She said Judy offered to host them, so, yeah, it doesn't surprise me at all that white people would give them money, um, to tide them over and be looking out for them or what have you, and they could have stayed there, they could have, you know, got hooked up repeatedly, but I think too, our son could have died in all this, I think they also would like, you know, let's be accurate about all this, I'm not here lying about all this, that's not, you know. Anywho, but yeah, I think, uh, yeah, the Browns did offer to give them a little, important, they, the, and that's even important because she keeps saying, we were hated, there was so much hate in the community and all that, like, come on, some of your, your biggest critics, they have been supporters of you all, like, come on, man, like, they would have to give me some evidence, they would have to tell me, like, people showed up on our lawn in trench coats, uh, they TP'd our house, they egged our lawn, they had all kinds of graffiti up, like, you all, you know, birthed a hater, you know, you've had to be that sort of, then I haven't heard any of that, anything, not, not anything close, you know? They came and egged our car, or vehicles, or something, I haven't heard any of that. Uh, for the hater, as well, she said they were swat, that she raised a swastika-wearing hater? Not a racist, lots of that, then, as she said, she's very skillful with words to say that he was losing interest in grades, nah, he was a lazy, uh, shiftless, failing student, ah, he was losing interest in grades. He's not a racist, he's a swastika-wearing hater. Maybe she's trying to be hip, get the lingo in, like, yeah, I'll say hater, I'll be, cool, please. Uh, let's see, other folks, star 61, they have commentary to share. Other folks that we missed totally, uh, if you have commentary, line should be, oh, let's see, I think, the Fresh Prince, she's too cool for Jim, they got too cool for school, she's, I'm too cute for Jim. The Fresh Prince of Philly, is she with us?
Jim is, um, you can't take Jim first thing in the morning, you can't. You just got off the shower, and you have to go through the rest of the day sweaty, it's not gonna happen. Um, I took a couple notes about this book, this woman is obnoxious. Uh, I think her, like, she's crying fake tears to me, it feels like, oh, please feel sorry for me, feel sorry for me. Oh, I was so, I was crushed under the weight of my grief, um, it just sounds weird. In the intro during the Diane Sawyer interview, um, she talked about the Mother's Day incident. Uh, it sounds like he threatened her a little bit, and she tried to sugarcoat it when he told her, like, I can only control myself, but so much, like, what do you mean? You're, you can only control yourself so much, what, what are you going to do to me? So, that felt a little, um, like she's trying to cover for her son. A year-long plan is not an impulsive fluke. As far as this section of the book, um, if you have to ask your lawyer, should you go get a haircut? That's the day you probably shouldn't go get your haircut. Um, it seemed odd that she didn't want to pay at the time of service as if any salon would allow you to mail a check to them. I feel like she went to the hairdresser to run her own PR campaign, like, I need somebody to see me see overcome by grief, I need someone to see my swollen eyes so they feel sorry for me too. Like, she really wants sympathy. Um, it doesn't make sense to be exhausted under the weight of your grief and unable to bathe but you made it to the salon for a haircut, like, it doesn't add up. And when she was talking about cremating Dylan, and she said she wanted to take his body to safety, where was she gonna put it? and she said she wanted to take his body to safety, where was she gonna put it? Like, it's, it's, it's a lot of just irrational babbling, it seems like, from her. It, it contradicts itself and it just doesn't seem genuine. That's all I had to say.
Hmm, contradictory. Indeed, indeed. Much obliged, Fresh Princess of Philadelphia. Too cute for Jim. Uh, let's see, I'll, let me get, alright, so we'll filter in the emails as we roll along here. We've had two, or one, email number two. Uh, greetings, Gus, uh, male investor. She was born in Bexley, Ohio, B-E-X-L-E-Y, Ohio. Eighty-nine point six percent white, wowzers. Five point nine percent African-American, according to the 2010 census. It was probably like ninety-seven percent white when she lived there. Uh, and it's described as having a large Jewish population, whatever that means. Ye, uh, she made four hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars from this book. Incidentally, the Denver Post, they have a two thousand, I'm gonna say 2018, could be a year or two off. They have a 2018 report where they say the book made roughly the same amount. We'll call it a half million dollars that was donated to a variety of mental health institutions. They didn't have any evidence of money that specifically went to Sue Clebold, uh, that was publicly reported. I have no idea if that includes all of her keynote engagements, where she gets to go and give these TED Talks and everything else, and Diane Sawyer, and all the rest of it. I suspect somebody would make some money from all of that. I think that half million, half million was just from the book. Anywho, she divorced Tom in 2014 after forty-three years of marriage due to, in quotes, "differences have they responded to grief and did not have common points of view over what happened," end quote. I hope she will talk about the differing points of view in this text. Me too. Chapter three, page one fifty-two, "Tom and I had been pleased to note, notice Dylan keeping his distance. Similarly, when the media identified Dylan and Eric as swastika-wearing haters, I felt strangely buoyed. There was simply no way this part of the reporting could be right. We have heard some variation of this conflation so many times on the cows broadcast. It has become cliche. He can't be racist. He's Jewish." That's in Driving Miss Daisy, like, if you need the old-school version, like, "Get out." And Jewish is not a racial, like, we should just have that set. The non-white people who are so-called Jewish, it's not a racial classification. Are you white? Period. Like, get out of here with that nonsense. Number two, page fifty-seven, "Still preoccupied by my dwindling money supply. The issue seems as if it is not that she did not have access to money, but she did not want to use her checks or credit cards in order to avoid revealing her identity. This seems to be an important distinction. Could it be an act of deception in order to garner more sympathy?" Now, that is really important to the, our first two, uh, people who dialed in, Fresh Princess and Zee's mom, about the sympathy they were talking about with the hairdresser. You already know this woman. There is absolutely no concern for identity with her, right? She already knows you're Sue Clebold. She already knows you are the mother of a swastika-wearing hater. Write her a check. You can keep your cash. She's paid. No big deal. Did you not? She said she didn't bring her check? She didn't bring her credit cards? Nothing? Eh, eh, I don't know. That, to me, is all like, just so, like, like I said, I seen the interview that the hairdresser gave. She didn't say that. She talked about, "He's not a racist. He's Jewish." She didn't say anything about what she talked about in the book. I'm not accustomed to being able to go to services and, you know, mail you something later, like, wow. Is that what it means? You get to be white? You get that much power? You can go and rack up services? Eh, I'll mail you a check when I, you know, we're good for it. Don't even worry about it. I'm white. Come on. Let's see, uh, number three. "I was Marie Antoinette getting in some self-indulgent me-time that Dylan was a spoiled brat, raised by negligent, self-des- self-serving parents. News reports focused on Dylan's BMW. Uh, an example of how suspected racists downplay their advantage in access to resources. By the way, how much money did they put into the car to make it drivable?" Good question. I bet those ungrateful shoals didn't give Isaiah a BMW. Poor Isaiah. Number four, page fifty-eight. "The gentlest portrayal of us parents in the media was that we were checked out, useless, bumbling, and blindly oblivious. In other accounts, we had knowingly shielded a hateful racist, turning a blind eye to the arsenal he was assembling under our roof, thereby exposing an entire community to danger. Sorry, Sue, there is some truth in these portrayals." Has to be, doesn't it? I mean, dang, it's not even like, they, in that 2020 segment, they said, "Seventy-five percent approximately of the school shooters don't have a criminal record." I said, dang, that doesn't even apply here. They could have left that part out, like, yeah, they got the criminal records. Felonies, in fact, like, move that one up, and school suspensions. We can move that all the way out. We got total delinquents here. Number five, "Gary had warned us repeatedly we would need to be careful for our safety. A large delivery of hot food had arrived for us at his office, a gesture of sympathy. Gary wouldn't allow us to eat a bite of the food for fear it was poison. I had recoiled in fear." Then she gives the hug. "This seems to be an early theme of this text. She claims that she was hated, ostracized, and feared for her life, but describes innumerable acts of kindness toward her, even from her critics like the Browns. I think this is all part of her ploy to garner sympathy and deflect blame. You see, my white neighbors did not think we were to blame. In fact, I even, they got video and picture of that raggedy-tacky sign that she talks about. We love you, Sue and Tom. Call us. We're here. We know you didn't raise a swastika-wearing hater. We got roast beef." Chapter four, "But there was a particular dream I had." See, the new age, you see, you see, see what I'm talking about, the new agey? "There was a particular dream I had. I only had once. I see Dylan's bloody bones scattered across a forest floor. There's a famous Buddhist tale about a woman called Kisa Kotami." I was, yes, you suffered, but are you just using it as a reason to deflect blame? Question. Chapter five, "But as I held him, I experienced a deep and unsettling sense of foreboding, strong enough to make me shiver. It was as if a bird of prey had passed overhead, casting us into shadow. Looking down at the perfect bundle in my arms, I was overcome by a strong premonition this child would bring me a terrible sorrow." I don't know about this. It reads like something out of a novel, a new age novel. Yes, yes. Uh, and incidentally, she takes that passage that I just read, chapter five, that is the very beginning of the tacky documentary that came out, 2016, uh, American Tragedy. That's how it begins, with a reenactment of her giving birth to Det- like, oh my god, oh, oh, oh. Like, man, I put attention-seeking, that was one of the options that I placed up there for. What is the ultimate purpose for why she wrote this book and narrated the audiobook? Just like Alice Sebold. Phone line again, we'll switch up. Let's see, uh, other people who dialed in with a hand up that we have not heard from thus far. If you have commentary to share, proceed.
May I be your-
Lauren, yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, sir. So, well, first, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, there were a couple of things, um, I noticed even in the intro. I think it was Diane Sawyer. She asked a question, "What kind of parents could produce children like these?" I have asked that question as well. And it said, "The last moments of his life were spent in violence, sadism, and we have to own that." I noticed they didn't say racism. I thought that was interesting. Um, I also noted that she called him the sunshine boy. I guess that was a reference to his golden hair. Um, I also noticed that she said, um, verbally, that she prayed for him to die. She didn't say she prayed for him to commit suicide, like she said in the book. So, it made me wonder if it really happened, number one, and if it did, which one did she pray for? 'Cause, I mean, yeah, suicide is dying, but dying is not necessarily suicide. Um, let me see. After, so when she goes to, let me a second. So there was a part that said, "Theories abounded, many of them conflicting, and each one of them more perplexing than the one before. The papers reported that Dylan and Eric had been goths. They'd been members of a death cult. They'd been sworn members of an antisocial clique at the school called the Trench Coat Mafia. They've been spoiled, overindulged brats who were never taught the difference between right and wrong. They've been gay. They've been bullied. They've been bullies themselves. The attack had been cold-blooded and planned for a long time. Alternatively, it had been impromptu and the voice had simply snapped." That part right there, you know, there's a couple of things that I really noticed. Um, they did seem to have a lot of possessions, so if that makes a child spoiled, then perhaps. Um, I don't know if they were gay, but I've certainly thought about it. Um, it said they'd been bullies themselves. There seems to be evidence that they were bullies. The attack had been cold-blooded. You know, if, if that means they weren't very emotional about it, they weren't angry, they just went in to do it because that's what they wanted to do, I guess that could be an accurate description. And they planned it for a long time, you know? I think a year is quite a bit of planning. I'm not sure how long it has to be for a long time, but that could qualify. Um, and also that part, "The voice had simply snapped." That had, you know, that idea that people snapped, that was discussed in, um, The Gift of Fear by Gavin DeBecker. It doesn't seem to be the case with most people. There are usually indicators that people are going to commit, um, violent acts, or, you know, do something like that. But people disregard them. Um, I, I did notice the part, I highlighted it, where she said the Browns had lent us some money to walk around with so we wouldn't have to reveal our identity through tre- checks or credit cards. I've been wondering about the Browns too. You know, it did seem that they were concerned about Eric Harris, but not so much about Dylan. And it seems they do like the Clebolds. I don't know how they acted with Eric Harris's parents. And, you know, I thought to myself that that's a community. You know, the Browns offered to let the Clebolds stay with them before they went to Tom's sister's house. They gave the money, you know? They put the sign out there. That's a community. I mean, minus the, you know, their children going to the school and shooting up, um, killing thirteen peo- people and injuring others, you know? Um, I noticed the part about the hairdresser, but everybody else talked about it. Um, but it is the part that got me. She said, "A flush of shame crawled up my throat as I fumbled with the bills and paid her. I was not the person she knew before the tragedy. I was the mother of a criminal now." Well, she was the mother of a criminal like a year ago, and maybe even before that. Um, a- and it's also, it's reasonable to think the hairdresser doesn't know her, and she doesn't exactly don't trust the, the hairdresser. Um, Sue is trying to convince us that she didn't know what Dylan was up to, and that's her son. So, anyway, I, I also don't even think, it's probably not even unusual for white people to request not to pay for things, or I'll mail you a check. I, I think rules and, you know, payment at the time of service, all of these so-called rules are, they only really apply to people classified as non-white. Um, other that stuff, I don't think white, the other stuff, white people don't have to do it. Um, let me see. It, news reports focus on Dylan's BMW. I don't need to read the whole part. Um, but there was another part. It said, I should read it. "News reports focus on Dylan's BMW. Never mind that Tom had picked it up for four hundred dollars, vandalized and virtually un-drivable, so he and Dylan can fix it up together. Aerial shots of our house made it look like a massive compound, but didn't mention it had been a handyman special with a mouse problem we gotten for a song because of its neglected, neglected condition." For a song? Like, what does that even mean? The house had a tennis court and a pool. They probably did more to sing a song to get that house. Um, uh, the part where the lady runs up to her at the veterinarian and throws her arms around her, you know, and she said, uh, "She told me she'd raised boys and she knew how unbelievably stupid they could be." See, this doesn't make sense. They spend so much time talking about, you know, how bright and brilliant and precocious Dylan was. Eric, Eric, you know, seemed to be, uh, pretty informed as well. So, like, I don't know what exactly it is they're trying to get us to believe. Maybe both. Maybe it doesn't even have to make sense. They were super smart. They were geniuses, but when it comes to harming people, they didn't know what they were doing. I think these things don't even need to make sense. They just say it. And, you know, once people say things so many times, people don't even, I think collectively, most people don't even think about the words that they're using and the words that they're hearing other people use, and what is causing them to think. Um, let me see. Um, also, in the intro, somebody asked her, "Do you think it's possible he had, like, a mental illness or a disorder?" And Sue answered, "Possibly." I, I have to start paying more attention because I don't think she's actually said that Dylan, um, had a, a mental disorder or a mental illness or some, she keeps using another term, uh, brain illness or something like that, brain disorder. Um, I really gotta pay attention and see, 'cause she's real slick. I, I'm not sure if she's actually said he had some sort of mental disorder. I mean, I understand he was not diagnosed with anything, and they keep saying he was sad. They're calling it depression. Um, so I have to pay attention to that. Now, she does talk about herself having, you know, some sort of anxiety, but then she'll kind of start talking about Dylan at the same time, or she'll talk about mental illness, like in other people, and get the, maybe not me perhaps, but the way she says it kind of makes the reader think that he has a mental illness without her actually coming out and saying that. So, I need to pay attention to that. Um, and I think, um, I need to be, she, she uses a lot of metaphors, similes, and exaggerations in this text, so I think that should be scrutinized. And, you know, the question should be asked, "Why is she using language in this manner?" Um, yeah, that, that's all I have for now. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Bravo. Always a fan of scrutinizing the, in fact, the one that's looking at me right now in my face. So, right beneath, excuse me, right beneath the portion in chapter three, where she has that sign, "Sue and Tom, we love you," yum-yum-yum. So, right beneath that, she says, "The sight of those familiar, dear faces felt like a radio-free Europe message transmitted across enemy lines." Are you kidding? Like, meta, like, are you serious? They're in some sort of war? You're in World War II? The A-bomb is gonna be dropped on you? Adolf Hitler is marching against you? Please, if anything, your son is doing the bombing. You would be the one with the SS on. Like, get out of here, man. But yes, the metaphor, like that, the metaphors throughout the book. Uh, all of this, in my view, is deception. When she mentioned, um, the woman that came up to her at the veterinarian and said, "Oh, you know, I raised boys and they can be unbelievably stupid." Pause. Uh, "This was a bombing that was planned for a year, maybe longer." This is not unbelie- that is not the word I would use to describe, "We're gonna bomb the school and kill five hundred people. Hope we get at least two hundred fifty of you." That is not unbelievably- That is not unbelievably stupid. They, she wouldn't have used the term like that if it had been Leroy and Jamal who had went to do all of this, nor would she have went to comfort Leroy and Jamal's mother if she saw her out at the veterinarian or wherever else in public. Like, oh my goodness, uh, Jacinta, I just wanted to give you a hug and, you know, I raised children too and oh my goodness, you hang in there, I'm gonna, yeah. Let's see. Email number three. Weave them in as we go. Uh, readings callers, audience, my thoughts on last week's book reading. Of course Sue Klebold narrated her own audio book. She's a narcissist, just like Woody. And the goal is to control the narrative and cover up her crime. And yes, I believe the parents of Eric and Dylan should be held criminally liable for the massacre, particularly Sue Klebold, whose voice for some reason is more prominent than the survivors, the victims and their families, I would agree. Number two, I think she and her husband are partially culpable for the subsequent fandom and crimes inspired by Eric and Dylan's massacre because she has been pushing the mental health lie alongside the lie that they were victims of bullying, in addition to not revealing the truth about what she and her husband knew about Dylan's activities. The result being that others have been inspired to emulate them, leading to the deaths of other innocent people, many times innocent children. That's important even for what, uh, Lauren just said about, is she actually saying that Dylan Klebold suffered from a mental illness? He wasn't diagnosed. Did she actually say that? She's got half a million dollars in profits to mental health organizations and she goes out and talks all the time. In my view, this is not mental illness. And we've talked about this for two months. I will say, Peter Langman is in that 2020 segment. I had not watched all that because we weren't Sue Klebold ready. Incidentally, Sue, uh, for Dr. Langman, I had to read, I think, like two different books that he wrote and a number of different articles as well, and that was way back at the beginning. I don't know if it would have been substantially different, but ooh, we, I would have given major pushback about him labeling Eric as a psychopath because the way that all, all of the mental health around all of this, I think is all part of the lie. Eric is a psychopath, Dylan is depressed or whatever it is. All of that is a lie. These are racist white boys and this is a part of white. There was an article in Brazil Today. It said Columbine's. They have imported US gun culture. That's white culture to Brazil and that's why we're having these shootings. They didn't say imported mental health problems. They didn't say you imported depression, psychopathy. US gun culture. And all that feigned, I'm a victim. Uh, that's what Sue's doing, right? I'm a victim. Z's mom pointed out, I gotta go back to kindergarten. They didn't do right by me in kindergarten. We about to graduate. Few weeks away from going to college, man. What are you doing and talking about? I gotta be from, this is not settled. I was really hurt back in, you know, five years old. I was really hurt about all that. Didn't get my graham crackers and it really set me off on it. Anyway, we got the bombs ready. Y'all fitting to get it. Like, are you serious? Come on. That is not mental health, all of that. Why, and they even put those pictures up for 2020. Eric Harris, Dylan Klebold, Adam Lanza. All the folks that we've been here, they put that list up. Everybody, oh, I think they had Sung Hui Choey, Virginia Czech. I think he was the only one. They might've had, uh, my fellow up in Alaska, Ivan Ramsey. But even him, he's really pale and his dad is classified as white. His dad is not just classified as white. His dad is the Rambo of Alaska. That lets me know a lot. What is it? The fruit does not fall far from the tree. Contrary to what Andrew Solomon, who wrote the introduction to this book, his lame book where he exonerates Sue Klebold. Far from the tree is a lie and they use the metaphors, trying to invert them. Get out of here. I see way too many similarities. The lying, Dylan Klebold apparently was an extraordinary deceiver. That's all I can conclude. He just tricked all of you all. His mother is an extraordinary deceiver. Uh, I didn't even read my notes. Let's see. I'll see if I can get into, then I'll save the rest for the other side. Uh, the cat is white and has a better quality of life than probably most black people. Uh, let's see. Dylan recovered from an episode of trouble in his junior year and had done a great job getting back on track. He was heading into the homestretch before graduation, hanging out with his friends and planning for college. That's what I mean about the deception. It would be totally different if Dylan Klebold down the homestretch had just been going to gym. Had just, hey, I'm making Cs and Bs, coasting through my senior year, getting ready for college. Like, oh, okay, you can say all that. This dude didn't even do the diversion program. He didn't even do his community service. That's in Jeff Cass's book. He's flunking gym. What do you mean he's recovered? There's zero evidence. He, I'm gonna straighten up and fly right, mom. You're a liar. And he wrote that paper like, it's so many. It's not like his, oh, he was doing at least this right. He was doing this, this correct. He wasn't doing anything correct. Jeff Cass wrote, hey, his teachers were stunned. You got into what? How? You're flunking gym. What? Oh, that whole affirmative action. Okay. Right on. All of this, uh, he had done a great job getting back on track is a lie. Probably still doing drugs and all that too. Uh, negligent parenting. Uh, let's see. And then she says too, more than anything else, this is what stands out about those early days in the aftermath of Columbine, the way we were able to cling in the strange and stubborn ways to an unreality, shielding us from a truth we could not bear. But those contortions could not protect us for very long from the wrath of a community we had come to love or from the emerging truth about our son. That right there, if I had to say anything mandatory, someone should have knocked the hell out of Sue Klebold for even writing that. I mean, like, Rocky Sylvester Stallone knocked the hell out of Sue Klebold for even writing that. By the time this tacky book came out, you know what your shirt, your son had on when he went to kill Isaiah Shoals. Twelve other people blew up the whole school. Wrath. You didn't face wrath, you tacky white wench. Are you serious? Nobody looked at you. Whoa, 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 whoa. Let's be real careful about the word wrath in this book. You didn't face wrath. You gave birth to wrath. That's how they pronounced it in, uh, Cullen's book too, cause he ended the chapter with that to make sure that we knew. It was natural selection, wrath. Oh, that's so tacky. And then all of this is, we were lying, contortion, we were lying. We were lying. We were in denial and we were lying and you're still lying all these years. Like, she even said that in 2020, cause she said, yeah, he went and harmed all them folks. She said, harmed? What, what? He killed thirty? Yeah, you're right, right, right. You're right, you're right, sister. You, yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's easier for you to say harmed than he killed and really intended to kill 500, 600. Yeah, 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 I said, yeah, yeah, yeah. Audio segment two. Sue Klebold, A Mother's Reckoning, Context of White Supremacy. Folks who didn't get to share, write your commentary down. We'll get you second audio segment. Sue wild, ain't she? We got Bad Time and all the rest of it, man. Can we get to the details about this bombing that you all totally missed? Can we get to some of that? The, the paper where he wrote about going to kill all the folks wearing the black trench coat? Can we get to that? Bad Time is not really helping us make sense of any of this. Uh, Catherine Massey Book Club. Incidentally, I had Jeff Cass's book sitting here. He was just with us last week. Also, they're not racist, but he did right. Now this is way back, beginning of 2000, I believe. He says, "The Klebolds wanted to write a book, according to Mark Housen," that's the white man who did the funeral, "and sought anecdotes about bullying at the school from Mark Housen's daughter who herself attended Columbine. I think it's up here yet," Mark Housen said of any publication, pointing to his head. "And I think they want to tell their story, honest. They want to tell their story. They would love to go out and talk to somebody or to go on television or whatever. Their lawyers just won't let them." That's one. And then, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. "In fact, the Klebolds," just skipping one paragraph, "had already talked to James Gaborino, a professor of human development at Cornell University, who publishes pop psychology books and has doubled as a consultant to the Klebold attorneys. He published a book in September 2001, Parents Under Siege, and was prohibited from quoting the Klebolds because his, because of his legal obligations. But their sort of cooperation fed a wave of publicity for the book, which excused the parents for any role in the shootings. The book was dedicated to Tom, Sue and Byron. The message was, bad things happen to good parents." Good parents. I don't know. You have to give me some. I guess they did drive Dylan to Arizona to do the room check-in and all of that. I guess maybe that qualifies, but I mean, mediocre, maybe? Uh, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. We'll give one more from Jeff Cass. "Now I submit, I saw the video of Dee, Sue's hairdresser, talking about, hey, yes, Sue came in, got her hair done and not racist. I'm submitting, I saw the video of this." Jeff Cass wrote about this. He says, "After the killings, Dee said Susan flagged Dylan's computer marathons as a warning sign, but she had, but she had hesitated to cut him off. Computers is where it's at, you know? He's learning a lot about it and that's a good thing. It'll give him an edge, Susan thought, according to Dee. Susan was flummoxed by testimony that Eric and Dylan were prejudiced. Dee, we're not prejudiced, Susan said. I'm Jewish, you know? We don't teach prejudice." Of reports that the two brandished Nazi slogans, Susan said, Dee, that's ridiculous. Susan said, excuse me, Susan seemed sad and numb when they spoke the day after Columbine, tears sometimes swelling up in her eyes. She really didn't know what to make of it. She doesn't mention anything about, at least in Cass's book, about the, she didn't wanna pay me and she tried to stiff me on the, you know, getting all that. Anyway, uh, number again, seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Uh, before I get to the folks who dialed in, I'll get one of our emails, make sure I finish up. But the other portion is, man, she says that sometimes, talking about these school shooters, there were glaring signs in the lives of these children that all was not well. Declining grades, promiscuity, drug use, trouble with the law. In many cases though, these kids were able to fly under their parents' radar. Blah, 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 blah. That ain't you, Sue. That ain't you. Let's see. Let's check them off here. So we got declining grades? Yep. Lazy, wouldn't even change for gym. Drug use, yep. Admitted that on the, uh, diversion program. Alcohol and cannabis, just like his brother. Trouble with the law? Yep. So three out of the four, we got checks. So glare, you said glare. That's the word she went, glaring. That's what I mean. Like, really? Do they count as good parents if you got all these glaring signs? Then they do the diversion program and Dylan, at least Eric did at least do the diversion, his community services. Dylan didn't even do that. And then he wrote that paper and all, so you got lots of, and he got suspended in school? Lots of glaring signs. You all are not good parents, man. Anyway, let me finish our emails. Uh, one caller wrote in. I got through half of, uh, her commentary last time. She continues. "I do not believe Sue Klebold wished that Dylan would die when she heard he was shooting innocent children to death. I believe that's a lie she has told to make her sound sympathetic. Her actions to cover up and minimize his crimes since the massacre show that she is very protective of him, even in his wrongdoing, and it's easy lie to tell after the fact." It's an easy lie to tell after the fact, for sure. Who would even be able to, you know, uh, challenge that, right? Think I forgot number three as well. Make sure I get that in. Number three, she writes, "The religious symbolism throughout the book is fascinating and highly manipulative, a tool she is using to bamboozle the reader." She even uses a lot of religious metaphors and such as well, right? So, and she does that in her, uh, interviews and such also. Uh, let's see. Number five, "I voted in the poll, selecting deflecting blame as Sue's reason for writing the book, primary. My second would have been cash dollars. However, I actually think her main reason is that she knows that the deadline for the release of the evidence that has been sealed by the court is approaching, 2027. The book was released in 2016 and I think that gives her good lead in time to manipulate the world before the truth of Dylan's role in the shooting is revealed as well as the evidence of what the parents knew about their criminal activities. I know the Columbine researchers, they already got the alert set. 2020, so let's take your vitamins, eat your kale, carrots, exercise. Leave that high fructose corn syrup, white sugar alone. We can be here 2027 in relatively good shape, COVID notwithstanding, and let us see." Number six, "She definitely gets attention and is almost a celebrity and there's no guilt there. I watched part of one of her talks, could not watch the whole video in one sitting as she repulses me. It's clear from her interaction with the organizers and the audience that she is revered. It's disgusting. There's no sadness or empathy in her voice or mannerisms and she is seeking pity whilst she pushes her false narrative." Seven, "She has no sympathy for the victims and their families, criticizing the Shoals family and the others who sued the Klebold and Harrises. She has the audacity to critique them for suing as if she should have a say. The mother of their children's killer." Incidentally, I think we have the name of their cat, Rocky. I don't think she's named any of the victims yet. Number seven, or excuse me, number eight, "You asked why gay white males are so interested in writing about the Columbine massacre." I sure did. "I surmise it's because they identify with Eric and Dylan who were rumored to be gay," she said there today. "Also, and outcasts, which I could ima, or would imagine these gay male writers felt at one time in their lives. There's also the sadomasochistic aspect to Eric and Dylan's sexual fantasies and the lifestyles of many gay males. It's also clear from Cullen's book and some of the supplementary material you shared during the book reading that many white people think about killing people on a regular basis." Yep, gay, Cullen said that. Uh, and make bombs as a hot, yeah, 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 yeah. What can you say? Number nine, Andrew Solomon met the Klebolds in 2005, six years after the Columbine massacre and Dylan's death. How does he know that they were good parents? That's, come on, man. That's what I said, man. Come on. And what do you mean by that? He also wrote that Dylan would not have participated in the massacre if he had not met Eric. How does he know that? I agree totally. People, they get real loose with this and he's not a psychologist. Like, who are you, man? Gay white dude, get out of here. Number 10, Solomon naturally has a theatrical voice, but that faux sad voice he uses- Number ten, "Solomon naturally has a theatrical voice, but that faux sad voice he uses as he recounts Sue Klebold's words as if she is actually speaking them is both odd and nauseating." Number eleven, "I wonder when Sue Klebold and Judy Brown fell out." I don't know that they did. What makes you think they did? Continue, anyway. Uh, Judy Brown had claimed that she was close to the Klebold's, but Sue Klebold seemed too distant herself from Judy Brown, and Judy Brown's husband clearly and rightly thinks very little of the Klebold's and the Harrises. I don't know, man. She, I mean, we read that today, right? She gave them, or they, the Browns gave them money, and unless I'm in error, I, they were at the funeral for Dylan. They said this. Um, I don't know. What makes you think they had a falling out? They've been critical of them the whole time, but they've, they're still in the family. Yeah. Uh, yeah, you'd have to give me, like, what makes you think they had a falling out? You'd have to give me, give me some details on that. Uh, number twelve, "This relates to the last book, but I'm curious, what was in Eric's bag, which caused him to act so aggressively to Judy Brown? I have a feeling it wasn't school books." She said she thinks it could have been pipe bombs or either plans about the bombing and/or missions or both, which totally makes sense, even fireworks and such. Uh, number thirteen, "Sue Klebold tells a story of Dylan requesting a gun and him teasing her when she said no. She relayed the story as if he was playing with her and not seriously expecting her to say yes. Her son was a sadistic narcissist who probably had ten guns under his bed at the time of that conversation." For, I'd have to go back and look at the date to see what, like, he could have had bombs, all of it, isn't it? Eh, just add this to the... Fourteen, "He also, he also accepted fireworks as payment for part-time work." Really? Fireworks that contained explosive, another sign of Dylan's innocence. Eh, yeah, yeah, you know. He just likes to see the colors and all, you know. Number fifteen, "I think Dylan's father spent so much time looking for the trench coat because he remembered what was written in the old essay that Dylan's teacher warned them about. The killers he wrote about wore trench coats." Yeah, I said that, man. Like, what do you mean? That's, I even mentioned that, where they talk about all the glaring signs. That would be one. You write this whole paper that it details pretty much exactly what you did without the bombs, and then it's all, da, 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 that's tomfoolery, da, 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 oh, shh, get out of here, da. Absolute, how could you forget that? She says, "It's the worst thing I've ever read, except that old Eric Harris writing about being a bully." But, yeah, other than that, worst thing I've ever read? How would you forget that? And it was days before all this. How would you forget that? Sixteen, I think Dylan, oh, seventeen, sorry, sixteen, I had to write the first one. "Sue Klebold wrote that she looked at Dylan on the evening he went to the prom and thought to herself, 'She had done a great job raising him.'" Really? That's what I feel like, really? You get to this point, he's plunkin' Jim. You gotta pay him to go to the prom. He didn't even do his diversion program. Teachers are stunned that he gets into Arizona. He's been suspended for calling people a fag at school, and you think, wow. I have, man, this is some A-plus parenting. Let me pat my sho- woo wee. Man, write me a book about parenting. And then the other son, then keep that too. Byron, is, they had to kick him out of the house for drugs? He's, he sweeps the parking lot? That's his job? Like Rhodes Scholar? Come on, good parents? Like, come on, come on, come on. Seventeen, "Cullen queried why Eric and Dylan hadn't killed more people, suggesting they were not real mass murderers. At the end of the killing spree, innocent and misled Dylan had one final attempt at setting off a pipe bomb, but it failed, instead setting off the sprinklers and fire alarm. They didn't kill more people because of technical errors." I would agree. If they had been more, uh, competent, they would have killed a lot more people. So, some of this is, yeah, yeah. And, uh, quality medical attention. Some of the students got help, a little quicker, lives saved. Eighteen, "Finally, Jeff Cass talked about the damage caused to helping us understand and potentially prevent other school shootings, bombings by pushing the lie that Eric was a ladies' man, and that Cullen's misleading book was a huge part to play in pushing that false narrative. The newspaper article falsely reported Eric was in a relationship with twenty-three-year-old, with a twenty-three-year-old." Yeah, 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 the whole Brenda part. Uh, "As inappropriate as that was, it seems Cullen made up the rest. This makes it even more suspect, the way Cullen sexualized Eric in the book." He should have really known about all of that before he published all of that, but, you know, hey, what can you say? Lies abound, gay white men bear fascination with this case. Uh, much obliged. Let's see. Get to the folks who dialed in via the phone line, seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Let's see. Uh, 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 let's have comp, let me share some of my... Oh, let's see. Fresh Princess of Philly, did you have commentary from the second portion? Maybe she's thinking, why she's thinking about it? Z's Mommy, did you have commentary, second portion?
Yeah, can I be heard?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, I have just a couple things. Um, she said that, well, she said in one of her statements that Dylan, she liked how, she was proud of how effortlessly Dylan was able to, I guess, join Byron's friend group. Although it's interesting, because I, I thought in Byron and Dylan, I don't know if it was in his, like, um, recordings or in his diary, but doesn't he say, like, his brother would always make fun of him or taunt him, and he never got along with, like, his brother because he was in a popular group or something similar to that? So, I thought that was interesting. Um, also interesting that she said, "We made sure they never had sugary cereal and, like, monitored their television." Because, I mean, this person, Dylan, he knew, like, all the lines to, like, Natural Born Killers and all of these very inappropriate films. On top of having, didn't he have, like, a Marilyn Manson poster in his room? And like a poster of, like, inappropriately dressed female? So, I'm, one, I, so that doesn't really check out with, like, what the evidence does. I mean, and, and I'm curious if she's going to have this much detail when it comes to his arrest or him, like, um, what was he? I don't know if he was suspended, but he did get in trouble for, I mean, I, for the, um, giving out people's lockers or hacking into the computers. So, because she's giving a lot of detail to these very, like, minute experiences that she had with him when he was a child, and all it seems like, if you wouldn't know that he, you know, became like a mass murderer, you would just think, oh, what a sweet boy. Maybe he was a little shy and had a slight temper, but nothing seems to be wrong. She seems like a great parent. Like, she seems very, um, delusional, or I don't even, I don't, not even delusional, because she's just lying. She's very aware, because all I can think about when I hear her think, say these things is when Jeff Cass wrote in his book, the way she would, like, edit out Dylan's behavior when she was writing it out for his diversion papers, his intake. And I could just see her writing this book and, you know, crossing out all the things that she should put in there, but she won't because she wants to, she's his spokesperson, she's his PR. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, and Dylan did talk about that, that he didn't say that he and Byron, his brother, man, that's my ace spoon coon, that's my man, twenty grand, but he didn't say that at all. In fact, that's in the basement tapes. He said, that's, is it like, man, that, oh, he missed, with the, with the, uh, kindergarten, man, back in kindergarten, y'all ragging on me, diss me, man, calling me names, man. That's why we got, got to, we got to do it. And my brother, family too. See, my brother always ragging on me, man. Popular, he's hanging out with the kids and everything. Yeah, him too, man. Like, really? Really? Lamest dude. That's what I mean, like, this is quality parenting. And excellent point with the TV, they said he knew, they didn't just say that he watched Natural Born Killers. They said they knew every line of Natural Born Killers, which came out in nineteen ninety-three, so he would have been thirteen. It's, uh, reported, unless I'm in error, they had posters of Pulp Fiction up in Dylan's room? That sound like you got parental control. You at least go in and look at what's up on the walls, like, huh, what's going on here? Uh, okay, what do you mean? Hmm. Yeah. Uh, let's see. Fresh Princess, did you have commentary to share? Should be with us as well.
Pardon me, I just want to say, she monitored his sugar intake, but not his alcohol intake. She has all this commentary about how wonderful he was as a child, but when did he become an alcoholic, angry teenager? And wasn't he the one with the stop yelling at me, stop, stop laughing at me, stop laughing at me behind some incident when he was, like, three or four? Is he the same one or was that Eric? Um, she's lying. She's lying. She's lying about everything. She's trying to make it seem like I wasn't a bad mother. So, yeah, I'm over her. That's all.
She's, you are correct. Uh, this is the same child who had the incident, uh, where he got upset, uh, stopped, like, through this major tantrum. Cullen told us about that, uh, in the book. Yes, that was Dylan. I was thinking, yeah, is he gonna talk about, you know, that maybe with his temper problem? How he was intolerant of others because he's only been around children that are his same age? Like, whoa, what does that, that seems like that's worth at least a chapter. Like, where did you even construct this goofy environment? Because I have never, at any point in my existence, solely been around people who were just my age, not even in school. Like I said, the teachers, the janitors, uh, generally you have other grade levels, so they're not the same age either. So, I don't even know where would you go where everybody that you're around is your age? Anywho, uh, let's see. See if I can do some of my thoughts briefly. She, when she talks about Dylan getting her a diary for Christmas in nineteen ninety-eight and the foreshadowing because it's the scream, I'm thinking, man, they have already spent six months in the bomb planning phase. Like, at this point, they probably, I don't know if they've got explosives together and all that, but I mean, they have made a lot of steps towards, oh, yeah, we finna blow up the whole school. Y'all finna get it. Let's see. All of the, all of this, like I said, if I was really serious, enough time has passed. If you really want to be truthful, there are so many glaring incidents in the last... And I mean, she might get to some of that. I know she does talk about the paper incident eventually, but I mean, wow. You really could fast forward through all of this. Like, we do not need all of this. Oh, he was normal, let me tell you about his bad time in Syria. Like, come on, come on. Let's get to the paper, get to the van break-in, get him admitting alcohol. In fact, even tell us about Byron and the drug problem there. He's already here, no publicity. They went, talked to his employer the day of all this. That's on the newsreel, first, uh, week of all this. Tell us about that. That seems relevant. If you're such a good parent, how did you deal with all that? Because I think Byron got kicked out of the house. This was a bad drug habit. That's a lot, instead of all this time wasting, uh, with, you know, anecdotes from when he was three and two and, you know, the ghastly feelings you felt the day he was born. Like, come on, man. Uh, I'm gonna see if I can go back to chapter four at least to see if I, anything else important. Uh, all the anecdote about the hot food coming and them thinking that it could have been poisoned? Like, are you serious? What? I can't imagine there being vigilantes out in the Colorado area that, you know, we are gonna get the Harrises and Klebold, you all are gonna, if anything, we are gonna get the Shoals for talking about racism, making us look bad out here in the Rocky Mountains. I could see that happening. Not, we're gonna poison the Klebold, like, did they have anthrax threat out there too? Come on. Uh, let's see. And she says the same thing that Cullen did, that we got the cream made, we got the cream made because they'll come and they'll desecrate the gravesite. That is a total lie. This is the golden boy. This is the sunshine boy. And now, we got twenty-five years of evidence. They are contemplating still tearing down the school, not because people come and paint graffiti, they come as a pilgrimage, that's the word. This is religious. We gotta come touch the spot of red vodka. I, there's no evidence at all. His gravesite would have been disturbed. We gotta go and take selfies. We gotta go and take, you would have seen all of these, like, Adam Lanza, it would have just been a total parade. That coward in Parkland, we gotta go to Colorado, see me at the gravesite. Yes. Leave some of his favorite stuffed animals and all the rest of it. Uh, let's see. Chapter four, I don't have anything there. Chapter five, this premonition. Uh, she says, "Our large-picture windows looked over the spectacular Colorado scenery." It's like, whoa, 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 whoa. You said you had a no-count, dilapidated, fixer-up rat pad. That's what you said. Now, as you got these spectacular views and all this natural light, and, wow, look at the Colorado. Ah, that's what, now which is it? Because it sounds pretty nice. That's what they said. It sounds like, wow, you all got a pretty opulent pad here and produce this monster to go out killing children on, oh, swastika-wearing hater. Said the police confiscated anything in the house that might provide evidence of bomb-making. I love it that everything keeps coming back to remind of what I say is most important about this. This isn't a cowardly school shooting. This is a failed bombing. We intended to blow up the entire school, six hundred casualties, because my brother ragged on me and you teased me in kindergarten. Let's see. They said they kept the light on because we were afraid the press or vigilante would... What? What? You have to give me some news reports. Like, I've looked at a lot, I haven't seen everything. You would have to show me where either the Harrises or the Klebold, I think, gay, they, Cullen, I submit. I read, but we read Cullen's book cover to cover. I read Cass's book cover to cover. We spoke to him. I submit, one or both of them would have told us if vigilantes were out. Rrr, they terrorized the Harrises or the Klebold's, rrr. Hopped the fence, jumped into their compound, tried to break into that. Like, come on. Spray gra-, even give me an incident of somebody came and toilet papered your house. Give me that one. I know Diane Sawyer would have included that. Uh, duh, duh, duh. All this, yeah, about him being sick of an infant? Like, come on, that's, chapter six, uh, man, eh, already said that one, eh. She said that there were reports that they were too restrictive with regards to parenting. I've been told that our family's position on gun control caused Columbine. Perhaps if Dylan had been habituated to guns, they would not have had the same mystique for him. People have asked me if we abused Dylan, if we permitted someone else to abuse him. The last questions about abuse, I would like those answered. Uh, the, if they were too restrictive or too lenient, that's it. That, hey, maybe, I don't know, I mean, he's talking about drinking and all this access at a very young age, bomb-making and all the rest of it. Eh. Eh, the fireworks too, eh. Maybe too lenient, maybe. I haven't, you'd have to give me the evidence. In fact, you would have to give me evidence that someone even made this charge, that they thought you all were too restrictive. I haven't seen that. Restrictive about what? What did he not have access to that you restricted? I haven't heard any prohibition. They said television. He knew every line in Natural Born Kill, like, what are you even talking? You liar. She's such a liar. Uh, the monsters, and it's, all this about, uh, monster and everything. This, everything short of him telling you, "We're gonna blow up the school on this date." Everything was right there. He wrote that paper and everything, and you all just lied and dismissed everything, like, phew. Come on, man, just fess up for us, Sue. Uh, Sue said the kid who, oh, man, talking about Byron, drug addict. Uh, Byron was the kid who hooked a plate of potato salad so it crashed into his own face, pie fight style, while demonstrating an armpit fart, and then did it again with a bowl of oatmeal the next morning during a breakfast reenactment. It was pure boyish tomfoolery. Now, I say the bombs, they say that's tomfoolery as well. This, to me, stood out for so many reasons. This, to me, stood out for so many reasons. That is also white culture. Food fights. They have starvation on the continent right now, black people, and even lots of non-white people here in the U.S., what they call food instability. Food deserts and all of that, and white people make jokes about wasting food and doing it repeatedly. This is white culture to even have a word like that, a food fight, not because we are starving and on the verge of death. No, we just think it's fun to just waste food. White cu, and hey, this bombing took place during lunchtime. That's a food fight for you. Uh, again, they, that's why I said, I don't want to hear nothing about Dylan being mental illness, depressed. I don't want to hear that about Eric Harris either because they keep saying it over and over and over and over. So, I'm gonna take you at your word on this one. You keep saying he was nothing if not normal. That's what they keep saying over and over. They were normal. They were the boys next door. They were so wholesome. They were so, so, so normal. If that's the case, fine. This isn't mental illness. They were normal. This tells me, hey, this is the white norm, and it seems, yep. Casey Bernal, she was gonna kill her parents, remember? That's one of the victims. But she was gonna kill her parents, remember? Satanism. Seance, that's Philly. Fresh Princess in Philly City. Yep. That was my school environment. They would go through the hallways and break the glass and pew, pew, pew. Go out and have the seance and call the devil and Satan out during lunchtime? That's the same thing we heard here. This is normal white behavior. The bomb-making too. Got it. Uh. Oh, I said the glaring signs. She keeps saying the vitriol and judgment against them. You'd have to tell me. You'd have to give me some evidence. She said that even after all of Dylan's troubles in his junior year, we were confident he would handle the inevitable challenges of life gracefully. Based on what? He can't even pass Jim. You got to be a lazy somebody. Sorry, Princess. You got to be a lazy somebody. You can't even pass Jim. He's not even doing it because I'm too cute for this. I got to sit back. I can't scuff up my Jordans. He's, got to plan my bombings. Can't do the calisthenics today. What would make you think, oh, yeah, this guy, the guy writing this paper? The guy with these grades, the guy that they were stunned, his teachers stunned that he was even accepted to college? What would make you think, oh, yeah, he is on the path to handling this life thing? Great. And look at his brother. Oh, the paleness came out twice in the book. The paleness, it is rare to have white and white complexion associated with something not pleasant, but we got it twice this week. Dylan was sick and in death. The paleness, the paleness. Supposed to have lots of vibrant color for health, whiteness as sickliness and death. Not fairness and beauty. Uh, let's see. Before we wrap up, uh, final thoughts. I didn't, I saw the, these chapters, some of them are very short, and then some of them get very long. So, have to do a better job of scheduling as we proceed. Uh, was Lauren gonna share anything before we wrap up? Lauren, are you there? Are you there, Lauren? Hand should be open. Maybe she didn't have commentary second time.
Yes, sir. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Having some issues on my end. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, there was a part, it said Dylan was diagnosed with pyloric stenosis, narrowing at the base of the stomach. Um, it also said that childhood illness was also the last time until his junior year of high school that I ever had real cause to worry about Dylan. So, I think, um, you talked about defects, I think it was maybe last session. Um, that stomach thing was Dylan's defect and Eric Harris had that sunken chest condition. Um, later, I don't have page numbers, I'm sorry, but it says, I know telling these stories here exposes me to further criticism. The thought fills me with fear, although there's no criticism of my parenting I have not already heard. Um, so, I think, right there, she was kind of honest. I think criticism is exactly what Sue Cleebow wants to avoid. And that might be a primary reason for her writing this text. Um, she also said, whatever parenting decisions Tom and I might have made, they were done thoughtfully and in good conscience and to the best of our abilities. I tell these stories not to burnish my son's reputation or our own as parents. Um, Sue, just her saying that makes me question it. It's like, this is the symbol. But it's like telling somebody, go ahead, get in the shower. I'm not gonna read your diary. That would make a lot of reasonable people ask, are you gonna read my diary? You know, so it's like when someone says they're not doing something, it really makes me wonder if you didn't actually ask. Um, another part, they said, we must make it easier for parents and other gatekeepers to get help for a child who is obviously having a hard time before that child becomes a danger to himself and others. And see, right here, that sounded like she was talking about Dylan. But if you look at the whole part, it says, um, they describe a baby that couldn't settle disturbingly antisocial behaviors in middle school and angry violent teenagers that grew to fear. In many cases, these parents tried repeatedly and often without success to get their kids help. She didn't do that. I will talk more about cases like these later in this book. And then here's the part, we must make it easier for parents and other gatekeepers to get help for a child who is obviously having a hard time before that child becomes a danger to himself and others. See, like, so she does that a lot in the text. Um, you know, she'll be talking about something else technically. She's talking about these other people, but really, she's low-key talking about her son. Um, there's another part. It said, there were hints that Dylan was troubled and I take responsibility for missing them. But there were no deafening, there was no deafening klaxon, no blinking neon danger sign. You wouldn't nervously herd your child away from Dylan if you saw him sitting on a park bench. In fact, after a few minutes of chatting with him, you'd be more likely to invite him home for Sunday dinner. As far as I'm concerned, it is precisely this truth that makes us so vulnerable. That is in contrast to what she wrote in chapter three. In chapter three, she said, I've been fixated on a picture that aired over and over. The most terrible school picture Dylan had ever taken, so unflattering that when he brought it home, I urged him to have it reshot. It made him look like the kind of kid teachers as well as students will find a reason to pick on. The guy you'd move your tray to avoid in the lunchroom. It didn't look like him. Hmm, I don't know. Probably looked like him. It was, it was a picture of him. And that's what she said, so I just thought I would bring that up in case, um, other people didn't remember. Um, she, she uses terms like vulnerable and scared and things like that. She's not really saying she's vulnerable, she's scared, but she's, uh, I don't know, like, maybe it's a metaphor, like, she's creating this tone, like a vibe, like, you know, Sue's a victim and her and Dylan are just scared, vulnerable people. So, it's part, she says, since I've been a real security cat as a child, I was impressed by how free of ordinary childhood fears Dylan was. He wasn't afraid to go to the doctor or the dentist as I had been at his, at his age. He got his first haircut with a big smile on his face. He wasn't afraid of water. Um, he wasn't afraid to be left alone in the dark or of thunder and lightning. Later, when we started going to amusement parks, Dylan could be counted on to pick the scariest rides. Sometimes he had to ride them alone while we waved from below because no one else had the courage to join him. Um, this made me think of the part in Columbine, uh, Columbine, uh, when the prisoner with the psychopathic characteristics was asked about how fear felt or to describe fear, but he couldn't. He just talked about what other people did when he thought they were scared. Um, and just the, the, yeah, that's what it made me think about. Talked about security cat. Um. Kind of towards the end there, it said, uh, taking the train at Pike's Peak, a mountain with an elevation of more than fourteen thousand feet and some of the most spectacular scenery in the world. When I anxiously, anxiously made eye contact with him through the rearview mirror on our way from one place to the next, he smiled softly at me to dispel my worries despite my concern Dylan was having the time of his life. And she, you know, she goes on to talk about how, um, how he was, like, he went up on that really high bridge or whatever and, um, you know, he gave her, uh, you know, he messed with her for being afraid or whatever. And I think, you know, just that thrill-seeking behavior is an indicator that he doesn't experience emotions, feeling fears like, um, the rest of the population does. And that's, that's all I have now. Thank you.
Much obliged, Lauren. Uh, Dr. Langman, uh, who is in the documentary, American Tragedy, and in the twenty-twenty segment with Diane Sawyer, uh, but he does have a whole section in his book talking about, that's one of the patterns with these, uh, school shooters, that they'll have some sort of physical defect or deformity, or even they might just be small in stature. I guess that's a double whammy for Eric Harris, but he says that that tends to be a pattern if you look over the long, uh, trend. I think even the Parkland shooter would be in that one. Uh, let's see. Uh, the end, even with the fear, that is in the definition for coward. Uh, being excessively afraid and/or dominated by fear. That is one of the definitions for coward, as well as, uh, being, lacking the courage to do the right or correct thing, practice justice. That is also definition for coward. I think Sue Cleebow might be double whammy. Uh, let's see. Retired firefighter, sixty seconds before we wrap up. Do you have commentary that you were gonna get in, sir?
Uh, yes, sir. Hold on. Let, let me get in front of my notes. I, I didn't think you were gonna tune me in. Hold on. Uh, yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Uh, yeah, uh, so far, the reading to me, uh, is a clinic on denial of, uh, logic. Uh, with the, uh, suspected racist seizing victimization. She, uh, uh, I have, uh, also, this woman, uh, she actually goes on the offensive of denial of any direct responsibility. Uh. Uh, she's an expert on using words to soften the reality of her child's terrorism. Uh, number four, if she was a guest on the cows, she would deny, she would deny, first of all, I think she would deny your meaning of racism, white supremacy, and she would pussyfoot through just about all of the questions and statements that you would have for her. Uh, number five, other white people can identify with this behavior. Uh, it's obvious she does, she does have quote-unquote allies, uh, a sizable number of them. Uh, and, uh, my mind also, as the reading was going on, couldn't help but, uh, to think, uh, if, uh, her or her son was a patient of Dr. Wellesley and, uh, how that, I, I would pay money to sit in on, on viewing that. Uh, 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 relationship between Dr. Wellesley and either one of, uh, uh, her and her children. And, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Much obliged. Retired firefighter in Florida, lots of denial, and I think it's just, it's lying, you know? Just having to lie about the, man, that as well, that there was no deafening klaxon? Whatever that means. No blinking neon danger sign? Man, I cannot wait until we get to the paper. Like, and now, she's gonna say she doesn't have it in front of her so she can't read it and all the rest of it. They have this paper to download, so, at, at minimum, I mean, you could say, I didn't have it then to look at. I'm gonna get to read it and all the rest of it. By the time it's for this book to get rolling, don't be putting no journal entries in here about, oh, this is what I thought when he got the chicken pox in the fourth way. Nah, 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 nah. Put that paper that he wrote, just quote from that, and then tell me that there weren't any neon, matter of fact, I didn't get my notes from chapter three. Lauren said, that school picture, I'm so glad she pointed out that contradiction, like, oh, my God, they put this photo up. It looks gassy. Like, you move your tray away from him, which they did say in the Jefferson County Sheriff's notes. You had a number of students who said, these guys were bullies and rude and they're Nazi salutes. And, oh, my God, let me get away from numerous people said that about them. That being said, with the school pictures, the photo that they should have put up, really, that should always be used. They should have put up Dylan Cleebow. Is that the boy who took the school picture with the T-shirt that actually says serial killer? That's the shirt that you put up forever. And in fact, put that shirt up, put that on the cover of this book. And then there were no neon warning signs. We, we got a mass school shit. The boy with the serial killer shirt on, who's writing about serial killers, I'd even forgot about that. The boy who did the project on Jeffrey Dahmer and then the boy who wrote about Charles Manson and other serial killers? And the boy who wore the T-shirt about serial killers? There were no warning signs that we might have a problem here. Nobody meant Jeff Dah, even that's one you all should think about. Jeff Dahmer. The popularity of Jeff Dahmer for the last twenty-five years, and to my knowledge, most of the people who write books about Columbine don't mention Jeffrey Dahmer. Langman is the only person who included him, and he forgot that he wrote about Jeffrey Dahmer. I had to remind him on the program. That's not important? They're writing about serial killers and then they go, white serial killers, and then they go do this? On April nineteenth, scheduled, Tim McVeigh, and then he gets moved at twenty for Hitler's birthday, who they have been writing about too? Neon, come on, Sue. Lies, lies, and lies, and lies. Sorry it went over time. I did a poor job of scheduling it all out. I wanted to get in that twenty-twenty segment because I thought that, she has so much great audio, that narcissism, she has so many great audio. I want to see if I can weave in as much as I can as we proceed from like the TED Talk and all that, but I should have just done a better job with the audio scheduling. Do better next week. We'll be here tomorrow, uh, neutralizing workplace racism, and then Saturday, compensatory call-in. Monday and Tuesday as well, but we'll do that later. Uh, Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy. We ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. No name-calling, no throwaway offspring. You see, we got enough child killing going on. Cows signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.